Good morning, please take your seats. Good morning, please take your seats. Good morning and welcome to our February 8th, 2022 Board Business Meeting. Welcome to our Board members, MCPS staff, and members of our community who are joining us here today. We're going to start today's meeting with the conditional appointment of our new superintendent. Once the conditional appointment is made, the Board will take a recess to take questions from the media and then resume the meeting with a closed session beginning at 10:30 a.m. Open session will begin at 12:30 p.m. Now let us begin the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the roll to establish that we have a quorum, starting with Dr. Daka.
Good morning, I'm present.
Ms. Harris.
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Good morning.
Ms. Silvestri.
Good morning.
Ms. Evans.
It is so great to see everyone, good morning.
Dr. Javtis.
Good morning.
And Ms. O'Looney.
Good morning.
Now let us get, begin the meeting with the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous. Now I will read the resolution for the conditional appointment of the Superintendent of Schools, after which we will take a vote. Whereas the Board of Education has engaged in a nationwide search for a Superintendent of Schools, and whereas the Board of Education has identified the individual who the Board of Education believes is highly qualified to assume the responsibilities of Superintendent of Schools, and whereas, under pertinent provisions of state law, the Board of Education must take action on the appointment of this individual prior to July 1st, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that Dr. Monifa McKnight be appointed to a four-year term as Superintendent of Schools for Montgomery County Public Schools, Maryland, effective July 1st, 2022, contingent upon final negotiation of an employment agreement and the written approval of the state Superintendent of Schools as required by law. At this time, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous. At this time, I'll take remarks from my fellow Board members, starting with Dr. Daka.
I just can't congratulate you enough for saying that you will still work with us. Really appreciate everything you've done. And I just wanted to say that there's been a lot about diversity that we've talked about, but Dr. McKnight is also concerned about all of the students in the, in the school system. Technology is important, we're thinking of Edison and Seneca Valley. Special populations are very important. International baccalaureate, magnets, the science and math magnets, and partnerships, and language immersion, and partnerships with universities. We think that we have moved ahead on some of these issues and we provided more opportunities for students to be involved in some of these programs. And we are trying to look at the needs of all of our students with these diverse programs, in addition to wanting diversity in our staff and making sure that we are working well with the students that are here of color. Thank you for that moment.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
I'll just be brief and say, congratulations, Dr. McKnight. Very much looking forward to continuing to work, to move the system forward, to get through the challenges that are facing us now, and to focus deeply on the areas of equity and diversity and inclusion, which I know are so very important to you.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Yes, I too will be brief and just say, congratulations. These have not been, this past year has not been without challenges, unique challenges at a difficult time, and I look forward to us all working together to, to get through what's coming forward as we go along, so congratulations.
Ms. Silvestri.
Dr. McKnight, I'd like to officially welcome you to this new permanent position. Thank you for your service to Montgomery County these past 20 years, and particularly these last two years, which has been the, some of the most challenging in public education. And so I think that your experience with our school system is going to help us accelerate the key work that we have to continue to do for all of our children. From the basics, from our strategic plan, academic excellence, operational excellence, social emotional well-being, to some of the other key reforms that you have been a part of, such as the expansion of pre-K, the extended school year, access to challenging courses for all our students so that they are college and career ready. And so we are excited to hit the ground running with you, to move our school system forward and ensure that all of our students succeed. Thank you so much.
Ms. Evans.
Sure. Such a great day. I first want to just acknowledge Dr. McKnight's mother, Ms. Dickerson, thank you. Yeah. You have raised a fine young woman. She speaks very highly of you and of you often, as well as her siblings and her husband and her son. It's so great to see you, Aiden. You should be very proud of your mom, and I heard it was your birthday. Happy birthday. So you all have a lot to celebrate today, and you know, I'll be brief too. I'll just say this, Dr. McKnight is always poised under pressure, right? I appreciate that. We've had a lot of crises that have happened in our school system, none like you have ever seen or I hope we'll never see again. She's always come prepared, prepared and thinking quickly, acting with her staff to make certain that we're making the right decisions on behalf of our students and all the adults in our school system. And so I'm really looking forward to continuing this work with her. She's very committed to equity. We see that in the anti-races audit that come under her leadership. And so I just say to you all, let's watch her work because she's going to do the work. And the Board is here to support her in all that she needs to do. So I will end my remarks there, saying this is a great day. Black History Month, right? The first female to be the Superintendent here in Montgomery County Public Schools, so. Didn't want to take that lightly, as I thought about that this morning, it's just, it's a lot. So just good to be here and to celebrate, and thank you all for being here. We've not had this many people in the boardroom in quite some time, but this is a good reason to be here. And so put that out in my remarks, thank you.
Dr. Javtis.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dr. McKnight. After I was appointed by this Board in December to fulfill Pat O'Neill's seat, I told friends and family that I've never met an individual who is as passionate, hardworking, keeps her head up during the hardest times, including being quite sick. And I'm just really, really excited and honored to get to work with you. Thank you.
Ms. O'Looney.
I also want to say, congratulations to Dr. McKnight. I know we've talked a lot about her work, and Dr. McKnight and I actually came into our new roles on the exact same day, July 1st, 2021. And since then, something that's especially stood out to me is just the warmth that you have when you walk into a room, how approachable you are, how everyone, I think, feels really comfortable striking up a conversation. And I think that's a really important quality to have in anyone, but especially in a superintendent, and especially a superintendent who's leading during a crisis, like the one that we have in our hands right now. So I feel really fortunate to have worked with you and really, really excited to see all the work that you continue to do for our students throughout the next four years. I think a lot of people in our district and a lot of people who work for us talk a lot about equity, but I think Dr. McKnight is someone who really, really walks the walk. So looking forward to this next four years.
Thank you. I too, Dr. McKnight, want to add my congratulations to every, to this appointment. It is really historic. You have only to look at the pictures on this wall to know how historic this appointment is. In addition, this appointment occurs in a building which is the first, one of the first schools for black children, which I think is a very historic moment. So while your job won't be easy, we're looking forward to supporting you through this. It has been a rough two years, as you know, because you have been here with us, and I say we have to let the healing begin, and it starts today. Thank you. Dr. McKnight.
Okay, thank you so much, President Wolf. And I will say, this is a very emotional moment for me. It is emotional because I don't take this responsibility lightly. I care for the children in the school system as I do for my own, who is sitting right in front of me. And that's why I'm here, and I am absolutely humbled and honored that the Board has selected me to serve as the Superintendent for Montgomery County Public Schools, and particularly at this time. A time when many of our students have experienced immense trauma in the wake of this pandemic in a way that we have never seen before. With these new challenges for students, it's also been a time in which our staff have had to go above and beyond in every way possible to support the student needs, and I thank them for it. A time when our parents have had to endure very difficult challenges, as we've had to pivot, and every time we've had to pivot, the families have had to pivot. All of these challenges brought to us through the pandemic have been tough on everyone. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the time of challenge and controversy." And I believe that is true for our community. As an MCPS community, we've cared for our children during some very difficult times over the past 23 months. It seems more like 23 years, but it's been 23 months. And I've said it before, and the community has constantly proven this time and time again, that when our community comes together, there is nothing that we cannot accomplish. I'm going to be brief today, but I want to thank our Board of Education for your support over the past eight months. And I must say that it is for their belief that together we are the right team to write the next chapter in history for MCPS together. And I'm excited to continue to work with each and every single one of you. Thank you, President Wolf. Thank you, Vice President Silvestri. Thank you, Board Member Mandrowski. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Dr. Duty Jaka. Thank you, Ms. Shabra Evans. Thank you, Dr. Scott Javtis. And thank you to our student Board Member, Hannah O'Looney. None of this could be done without your leadership. I also want to thank my family who have joined me here today. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for acknowledging her. My mother is here with me from South Carolina. My husband, Bernice, is here, and my son, Aiden. My sister, Juana. My nephews, Jackie, coming all the way from Annapolis, from the Naval Academy, and his brother, Jason, coming from South Carolina. Thank you for being here. My Aunt Diana, thank you for being here. My friend Hope, thank you for being here. This is my support network, always, and we all need one, particularly during the last 23 months. And I want to thank my sister Kathy, who is tuning in from South Carolina. These are her two sons, and my brother-in-law, Louis, who's tuning in from Virginia. I look at them because I need for everyone to know that my family were my first teachers. Throughout the course of 23 years in education, my family has grown to include students and colleagues from all walks of life, because they all represent service in so many ways, and they taught me that commitment to service early on. Today, as I reflect, I'm reminded of a student who I had in my first year of teaching. Her name was Carla, and she left a note for me in my first year of teaching that I will never forget, because I felt so convicted by her words. She shared that I was her first African-American teacher, and she saw herself in me, and what I represented was positivity that she had never seen before, and because of that, she wanted to follow into my footsteps and become a teacher. Those are the sorts of relationships that educators cultivate with all students, every single day, in every single moment, and they're so meaningful. They form the lifeblood of every single thing that we do. So that is the part that we all have to stay very convicted about. These are the connections that we have to continue to make, continue to mold into the fabric of what we want for our future and in our children. Before we adjourn, I do want to offer a reminder about the work that we have to collaboratively pursue together in the coming months. That is the work that I am committed to and the work that I invite everyone to join us in, in Montgomery County. First, we need to rebuild our trusting community. I have visited educators in schools, I've met with parents, I work with principals, and I always hear a unified investment in our students' success. That's what we all care about, is what we all should care about. But I also hear real fear and deep concern about the historic disruption that we are living through and how it's impacting our children's development. We may hold very different views of how to best approach these issues, but I trust that we approach them with a unified investment in our children. Second, I want to continue to work to make sure every student is safe and healthy, healthy physically, healthy emotionally. More than ever, our students need to feel safe, loving, and they need to reside in comforting environments. Finally, we all do this work because we believe in the amazing transformative power of teaching and learning. We have the honor and the obligation to realize unprecedented educational outcomes for all students, and I do mean all, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, language, or zip code. And we can never lose that focus, because it must be personalized for every single student who depends on us to be there for them every single day. Making real progress on these priorities requires that our community commit to join hands and walk alongside one another. And I say upfront, you will always have that commitment from me. In that spirit, I would like to close with the words that Amanda Gorman opens her poem, "New Day's Lyric Withth." May this be the day we come together. Together is our path forward, together puts us on the same page, and today, that page is a new page. On our new page begins the next great chapter in our school system's history. And by the end of this chapter, when the others ask, as in the tradition of the Masai tribe, "How are the children in Montgomery County Public Schools?", may we likewise and resoundingly respond, "Our children are well." Yes, all of our children are well. Together we have so much to do, I'm thrilled to stand with you together to do this work. Thank you.
At this time, we're going into recess, and I just want to say, happy birthday, Aiden. We'll come back at 10:30, thank you. Welcome back. At this time, the Board will go into closed session. Can I get the closed session resolution?
I move that the Board meet in closed session to address topics listed in the posted resolution for today's closed session, and for the reasons and on the basis stated therein.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous. We'll now go into closed session. Thank you. Welcome back. At this time, we're up to item number five, recognitions. Dr. McKnight.
Thank you, President Wolf. Good afternoon, Board members. First recognition is National Counseling Week. Whereas National Counseling Week of 2022, with the theme of School Counseling Better Together, will be celebrated February 7th through 11th, 2022, to focus public attention on the unique contribution professional school counselors make in assisting students to achieve academic and social emotional success, plan for a career, and prepare for college or other post-secondary education. National School Counseling Week highlights the impact school counselors have in supporting students to achieve school success and reach their full potential. Professional school counselors are committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these characteristics relate to career awareness and development. Professional school counselors help parents and guardians focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. Professional school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set goals for themselves. Professional counselors address the needs of all students through prevention and intervention programs that are part of a comprehensive school counseling program. And comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education hereby proclaim February 7th through 11th, 2022, as National School Counseling Week in Montgomery County Public Schools, and recommend observance in all our school communities.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. Our next, thank you. Our next is focused on Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. The National Resource Center on Domestic Violence has designated the month of February 2022 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month to raise community awareness about teen dating violence. Nearly 1 in 11 female and approximately 1 in 14 male high school students report having experienced physical dating violence in the last year. 26% of women and 15% of men who were victims of contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime first experienced these or other forms of violence by that partner prior to age 18. High school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at a greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. By educating young people, educating educators, families, and the community about safe and healthy relationships, relationship skills, and the signs youth exhibit if they're experiencing dating violence, we work to disrupt developmental pathways toward partner violence. The establishment of Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. Montgomery County Schools believe everyone has the right to be safe and in a healthy relationship and to be free from abuse, as evidenced by the Be Well 365 Essentials: Physical Health and Wellness, Mental and Emotional Health, and Trauma-Informed Practices. Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education and the interim Superintendent of Schools hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and support the Choose Respect Montgomery Program through continued education in health classes, promotion of the public service announcement contests, and the work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthy relationships, assist students and families in assessing information and resources, and engage in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of teen dating violence.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you.
Swift, I move forward, the monthly human resources and development report for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous.
And Ms. Wolf, I do have two appointments. I'll begin with the first appointment. Mrs. Erica L. McCray, as Supervisor of Assessment and Data Management in the Office of Shared Accountability. Ms. McCray has been employed with MCPS for three years as a coordinator, pre-K programs division of early childhood, Title I programs, and recovery funds office of, in the Office of Teaching Learning in Schools. Mrs. McCray brings to MCPS more than 12 years of teaching and leadership experience. She looks forward to joining the shared accountability team to support assessment and data management.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous to those present.
Thank you. Our next appointment is Dr. Kavina J. Griffith, Principal of Gaithersburg Elementary School, Number Eight. Dr. Griffith has been employed with Montgomery County Public Schools for nine years as a special education teacher, assistant principal, and most recently, as a principal intern at Whetstone Elementary School. Dr. Griffith looks forward to creating a shared vision for success and building a community of students, staff, and families at Gaithersburg Elementary, Number Eight.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous to those present.
Thank you for those appointments. And Ms. Wolf, if I may, I do have one more recognition that I'd like to make. I'd also like to recognize educators who earned certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards in 2021. Through its National Board Certification Program, the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards certifies highly accomplished educators who meet rigorous standards through intensive study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review. National Board Certified Teachers seeks to identify and recognize teachers who effectively enhance student learning and demonstrate the high level of knowledge, skills, abilities, and commitments reflected in the five core propositions that are defined, that define what the National Board Certified Teachers should know and be able to do. Since the program's inception in 1987, more than 128,000 educators nationwide and 3,473 educators in Maryland have achieved National Board Certification. Maryland ranks 11th in the nation for the total number of educators who have achieved certification. MCPS continues to lead the state in the number of educators who earn this prestigious recognition of their proficiency, with 13 new NBCTs this year and 67 renewals.
with 13 new NBCTs this year and 67 renewals. The 13 new NBCTs are among the 72 Maryland educators who achieved certification in the NBPTES in 2021. This brings the total number of educators who have earned National Board Certification while working for MCPS to 998. Whereas the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards has established a voluntary certification program to recognize outstanding teacher competency, the Maryland State Department of Education and Montgomery County Public Schools have participated in financial aid programs to encourage educators to engage in the rigorous process of becoming a National Board Certified Teacher. And Montgomery County Public Schools provides a variety of supports to assist candidates as they work through the process of National Board Certification. Montgomery County Public Schools has identified the skills competencies and rigor of the National Board for the Teaching Professional Teaching Standards five core propositions as the foundation for the teacher's professional growth system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education support increasing the number of National Board Certified Teachers, and be it further resolved that the Montgomery County Public Schools recognizes and appreciates the leadership skills and abilities of National Board Certified Teachers, which benefits our students, staff, and communities. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education and the Interim Superintendent of Schools urge all Montgomery County residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for these educators and the skills they bring to the students of Montgomery County Public Schools. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby recognize the educators who have completed the National Board Certification process and became National Board Certified Teachers in December 2021. Congratulations.
With approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous of those present. Our next agenda item is public comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of redress for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have 10 persons signed up to provide in-person testimony. Each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the podium. Keep your mask on, but speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Your mask should be properly worn over your nose and mouth. 30 seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have two audio testimonies and eight video presentations. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on board docs where they are posted with the other materials for this meeting. At this time, I'll call Jennifer Martin.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. McKnight. The Montgomery County Education Association appreciates the care that you have taken to conduct a superintendent's search that brought experienced candidates forward from across the country. MCA is pleased that in recent weeks, Dr. McKnight has made the effort to engage the unions in discussions and collaboration in problem solving, and we hope this will continue. We also note the historic moment we are in as MCPS selects our first African-American woman in this role. We will continue to work in good faith with MCPS leadership to ensure that every student receives an excellent education that leads to academic success and a happy and prosperous adulthood. The challenges of COVID have brought longstanding problems we face as a school system into sharp focus. We also have opportunities to address them with substantial new federal, state, federal, and state commitments. The influx of federal recovery dollars provides added support to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. The Blueprint for Maryland's Future brings with it improved funding and a renewed focus on raising education profession in the service of student achievement. We must address the longstanding staffing shortages that have grown even worse during the pandemic. MCA looks forward to working with the superintendent to restore professional respect for educators and develop a plan for attracting, supporting, and retaining diverse and dedicated educators who will uphold the excellence in teaching and learning. As Dr. McKnight becomes our new superintendent, MCA intends to treat this as a time for a fresh start. We know that student success will be rooted in our ability to work collaboratively to address the challenges and opportunities we face.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Do you have your testimony? Next up is Mr. Williams, Art Williams. Please turn on the microphone. It's underneath.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I thought I was going to be the first to announce the fact that we here in Montgomery County is proud to have a female superintendent, as well as being... Thank you, as well as being black. The 1977-2 Action Group, as you see, we've been here 44 years. And we're going to be here with you, Dr. McKnight. But before you notice that my testimony was changed because we didn't know who to expect. But we're very happy. I have with me four of our members, Vernon Ricks, Janet Ricks, and Dr. Troy Bottis. This one was... As long with me, I have my right hand here. Not on my right hand. I have my lovely wife. Some of you may not have seen her. For 57 years, 57 years. So when you see me, you hear anything about me, that's who was behind me for 57 years. At this time, since I cannot see, she's going to read my testimony because we had opportunity to make changes. Because the one I was going to give early on was a little different from the one we're going to give now. So, Emma, would you please read our testimony?
Thank you. This morning, the Board of Education fulfilled its primary duty by selecting a new superintendent of schools. We stand by your choice and applaud it. Now we have to set the process behind us and secure an operating budget that allows our children to thrive. Today, you will recognize teachers and who have received National Board Certification. We know that these types of teachers are needed at all of our schools, but are most needed at our highest need schools. What is MCPS doing to ensure that our most highly effective teachers are in front of the students who need them most? In addition to the need of the highly effective teachers, we need to ensure that we have the most effective principals leading schools with the highest need. These are not new requests. These are not novel requests, but they are ones that Black parents need to know the new superintendent and this board will address. The disparities that have been exposed by the global pandemic do not afford us the luxury of tinkering at the edges. Substantial change is needed. We must support all children to thrive and not sustain a system that has worked for some students while way too many Black children have been undereducated, undervalued, and underserved. As we enter this new chapter with the announcement of the new superintendent, the 1977-2 Action Group calls on this leadership body to be bold and courageous, not simply a rhetoric, but with systemic changes. And that is not simply rhetoric, but with systemic changes that put our most capable principals in schools where they are most needed and our most effective teachers in classrooms where children need them the most. Congratulations, Dr. McKnight, on your appointment. We expect big things and the evidence will be in the social, emotional growth of our children in tandem with their academic success. We are here to work with you and the board to make that happen. Step one is the adoption of the mission-driven budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is David Hill.
Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. McKnight, it gives me great joy to say that. I'm David Hill, a past president of Yunu Chapter of Omega Psi Phi fraternity here in Montgomery County. Currently, I serve as the political action co-chair. Yunu Chapter is made up of more than 200 African-American men, many of whom, like me, have had children in MCPS or currently have children in MCPS. Today, I'm providing comments in support of the work that Dr. McKnight, you and the board are doing. And I would also like to commend the board for your efforts to support staff and students to this point in Montgomery County Public Schools. In this challenging time, the largest portion of your proposed budget prioritizes staff compensation. Our community's teachers, school employees, including principals, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, and custodians have been the heroes of the pandemic as we have navigated the negative effects of the pandemic. We support prioritizing their improved compensation as a sign of respect, as a "add a boy, add a girl" to the work that they've been doing. Our school staff, including you, are not thanked enough. So I'm here to say thank you. We're also encouraged that you propose to expand pre-K opportunities and are focused on investing in socio and emotional supports for both staff and students. Learning in a pandemic has required strenuous challenges for staff and students. So prioritizing those emotional effects are critically important. We look forward to working with you. As you know, Yunu Chapter founded the George B. Thomas Learning Academy. We look forward to working with you as you work on tutoring. Reach out to us when you decide how you're going to prioritize tutoring going forward. In closing, we stand with you, Superintendent McKnight. We stand with you, Board of Education. We're here to support those efforts, including any efforts to whitewash and water down your historic community, your historic...
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Next is Anne Marie Boyd.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Anne Marie Boyd, and I am a longtime volunteer with Moms Demand Action, Every Town for Gun Safety, and Be Smart, Every Town's Nonpartisan Initiative to Educate the Public About Safe Gun Storage. I am also the mom of a McGruder High School junior who recently spent a very traumatic Friday afternoon in lockdown with his classmates after one student shot and seriously wounded another with a ghost gun. School safety and gun violence prevention are very much on my mind these days, and I'm sure you are wrestling with how the board will respond to those issues going forward. But I urge the board to take a few relatively simple and very positive steps as soon as possible. First, please pass a resolution that reinforces the critical importance of safe firearm storage and ensure that parents and guardians acknowledge receipt of that message. Second, MCPS already approved the distribution of Be Smart postcards in February of 2020. However, widespread distribution of this safe gun storage information, which can be done electronically, has not occurred. Please provide system-wide guidance to school administrators to ensure the immediate and equitable distribution of the Be Smart message by all schools. Finally, as a McGruder mom, I ask that MCPS clearly and directly warn parents and guardians about the threat of ghost guns in our community and the ease with which children can obtain these weapons with potentially deadly consequences. MCPS should also take an active position in support of the bill pending before the Maryland Legislature to limit children's access to ghost guns. These practical measures can be implemented right now. They can truly make a difference, and they may save lives. Thank you.
Next is Eric Grenolds.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. McKnight and Board of Education. Hello, my name is Eric Grenolds. I'm the father of two MCPS students and a volunteer with the Maryland Chapter of Moms Demand Action. According to Every Town for Gun Safety, approximately 75% of school shooters under the age of 18 acquired the guns they used from their home or the homes of relatives or friends. An estimated 5.4 million children in the United States live in households with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. In Montgomery County, handgun permits doubled in 2020, many of which were issued to first-time gun owners with little safety training. I witnessed firsthand how easy it is for a child to access an unsecured firearm. In 2015, my youngest son was three years old when he walked into the kitchen of the home we were visiting, holding a revolver in his left hand. We immediately removed the gun from him. The gun was not loaded. We got lucky. At the time of this incident, I had been a gun violence prevention advocate for several years. So believe me when I tell you, if it can happen to my child, it can happen to anyone's child. Therefore, I call on the MCPS board to pass a safe gun storage resolution that educates gun-owning and non-gun-owning school families on the dangers of unsecured firearms. I also call on MCPS to expedite the distribution of safe gun storage information from besmartforkids.org in electronic form to all middle and high school families and in postcard form to all elementary school families. MCPS already approved this distribution in February of 2020. I also urge MCPS to host a community conversation in which a trained besmartforkids.org volunteer discusses how gun-owning and non-gun-owning families can avoid the dangers of unsafe gun storage. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Next is Paul Geller.
Good morning, President Wolf, or good afternoon, Vice President Silvestri, distinguished members of the Board of Education, especially you, Dr. Daca. I love you. I'll admit it publicly. You're always my favorite. And Dr. McKnight, congratulations to you for being our new superintendent. I believe in you. I know you're going to do great things. And just be yourself, and everything is going to be fine. Trust me. You are the one. I'm here today really to thank you, to thank a lot of people in the Carver Educational Services Center for actually something very personal to me. My son did an Eagle Scout project here. And he did it because he wanted to thank the four teachers in the Interim Instructional Services Office who helped him graduate. My son has been quite sick for about four years now. And I was shocked when he... My son has been quite sick for about four years now, and I was shocked when he said he wanted to do his Eagle Scout project here at Carver, and I questioned him about it, and we he pushed the issue, and we met with Mr. Hollis, who runs the building. And he took us around. Daniel had seen a spot in the interior of the building. Mr. Hollis said, there's another spot I want you to see. He took us around to the front of the building. If I had a nickel for every time I complained about the shape of the front of the building, I'd have about five bucks in nickels. It looked downtrodden, it didn't look so great. He wanted to put a mosaic up there to thank his teachers, and frankly, to thank everyone who works in here. He did that. You came up with the idea of doing landscaping as well. Many scouts worked on this project, and so did many MCPS employees. I put all of their names in a document to thank them. It meant a lot to Daniel to do this project, and it meant a lot to all of us, especially because last year was the 70th anniversary of the Carver Educational Services Center and the 60th anniversary of MCPS being here. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Warren Crutchfield. Mr. Warren Crutchfield was in the class of 1952 here at Carver.
Thank you, Mr. Geller, we have your testimony. Next is Dawn Ayana Kohan.
I'm Dawn Ayana Kohan. I'm the mother of two boys and a licensed mental health therapist with over 21 years of experience working in various school settings. On June 11, 2020, Caitlin wrote an article titled "County Leaders Call for More Mental Health Resources After Three Student Suicides in Two Weeks." This was two middle and one high school student, and that was 20 months ago. Where are these more mental health resources? For the current school year, 10 weeks in, police responded to 48 reported assaults. And now here we are in February, and things have only gotten worse. Here's a few examples. Northwest, January, a student was murdered and a 2021 grad died by suicide. Whitman, December, three students charged with first-degree murder, and January, a student died of an overdose. Seneca Valley, December, two bomb threats in a week. Blair, November, a student was stabbed, and the next day, a different student brought a knife. Northwood, November, student found with a gun and ammo. In January, four students charged with assault and robbery. Wheaton, January, student had a BB gun and another found with pot and a handgun. BCC, January, student died by suicide. In February, just the other day, student assaulted a security member. Churchill, January, brawl at a basketball game versus Blake. Emma Gruder, MCPS had its first school shooting on January 21st. The lack of urgency on getting more mental health professionals into the schools has left MCPS with blood on its hands, and this isn't the first time I've said that. The difference now is that more student lives have been lost. How many more kids need to die? How many more violent acts will it take for you to put mental health as a top priority rather than wasting money on home test kits serving no purpose, KN95 masks that don't fit most students? So I'm going to ask you again, where are the more mental health resources that were promised 20 months ago? The new pandemic is one of mental health crises, and this can't be fixed with restorative justice, two weeks of virtual mask mandates, or saying yes to the test.
Next is Amy Wykoff.
Good afternoon. Thank you, members of the board and Dr. McKnight, for this opportunity to testify. In the spring of 2021, fourth and fifth graders at Ashburton Elementary School read a book meant to help them further the school's goal to become more, quote, "anti-racist." The book, this book is Anti-Racist by Tiffany Jewell, whose hobbies include, quote, "dreaming up how she can dismantle white supremacy." According to Jewell, quote, "Someone described racism to me as the smog we breathe. It is all around us. Racism is everywhere. Our lives are polluted with racism, and it harms us all," unquote. Jewell believes racism can only go in one direction, from white people towards anyone outside the, quote, "dominant culture," unquote. Quote, "Being racist against white people is not a thing. Remember, racism is personal prejudice and the systemic misuse and abuse of power by institutions. So I can have a prejudice against white people, but there is no system that has been put in place for centuries to keep white people oppressed. In our society," and her bold, "reverse racism is not real." In her view, the only people who benefit from this institutional racism are white people. The white children at Ashburton reading these words may come home with feelings of guilt and shame. However, in a recent response to a letter from a concerned constituent, Daniel Suskind, coordinator, Legislative Affairs Office of the Board of Education, insisted that MCPS does not promote the blaming or shaming of white students or families for the actions of others. Jewell's words prove otherwise. Be mindful of the space you are taking up. Black, Indigenous, and other folks of the global majority are continually silenced, talked over, and pushed aside. If you're BIPOC, take up space. Go to the head of the line. Speak first. If you're white, step aside. No wonder this type of teaching is bringing divisions into the classroom where there were none before. I call this racism. It has no place.
Next up is Zakia Sinkara-Jabbar.
Good afternoon, President Wolf. Congratulations, Dr. McKnight, welcome to being our permanent superintendent and other board members. My name is Zakia Sinkara-Jabbar. I'm a resident in Silver Spring, and I have two children in MCPS. I am here because I am concerned about the reinstatement of police in our schools. I am a member of the Silver Spring Justice Coalition. Also, I am the director of Racial Justice Now, where we focus on institutional and systemic racism, particularly anti-Black racism. I want MCPS to make sure that we're living up to the things that we write on our websites and the things that we put in policies as it relates to equity. Black children, particularly when it comes to academics and discipline, continue to have the most suspended in expulsion rates, and when police were in schools, they were the most arrested. I believe that there needs to be wellness centers in each of our schools, particularly in our high schools and middle schools. My son, who was in high school, comes home to me weekly. There's constant fights at the schools. I don't believe that a police being there to arrest these children and criminalize them is the answer. Clearly, children are suffering mentally and socially. We've been out of school, we're living in a global pandemic, and they need support. I support the idea of mental health therapists and counselors, but particularly culturally competent, mental health counselors and therapists. I also support the idea of restorative practices, and would like to see MCPS actually invest deeply in restorative justice in having staff, not just at central office, but at our schools full-time, not people who are stipended and only work part-time and can't handle 1,600 kids. There needs to be a full-on wellness center where you have community intervention workers and so many others who can support the social and emotional wealth of children. Thank you.
Next is William Richborg.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and congratulations, Dr. McKnight. Hope for much success. I want to start this testimony with a quote from a parent who happens to be Black. He said that racism in America would be dead today if not for certain people and certain institutions keeping it on life support, and that includes public education. There is nothing more damaging to a society than to tell a child that she or he has grievances against another child. There is simply no point to that in doing that to our children and putting CRT in the classrooms. CRT does exactly that. It is not combating racism. No matter what these high-priced charlatans may tell you, they're in it for the money, and you have fallen for it. We come here month after month to tell you what we see is going on in our schools, yet not a peep from you. What are you doing to address our concerns? Have any of you looked at the propaganda being read and taught in the schools? Have you questioned a single principal or teachers to find out what is actually being taught and not what they say is being taught? I challenge you to give us a report as to what you find. For example, on what basis do you justify the Race Hustler Consultant recommendations and require psychoeducational lessons such as training MCPS staff as equity-literate leaders or requiring all schools to implement lessons about the dual pandemic of COVID and systemic racism occurring in Montgomery County? Personally, I don't think you believe we are worthy of a legitimate investigation of CRT in our schools. In fact, I would bet you think we don't actually know what CRT is. Let me be clear, parents and taxpayers have stood up.
Thank you, we have your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we've received two audio testimonies. First up is Evelyn Chung. Please play the audio.
My name is Evelyn Chung, and I'm testifying today as a parent of two MCPS children. Our children and teens are facing a mental health crisis at the same time that applications to buy a gun in Montgomery County have nearly doubled. Removing access to guns is integral to preventing our teens and children from harming themselves or others. Most teens who die by gun suicide use a firearm that belonged to someone in their home. Three in four school shooters used a gun they took from a parent or close relative's home, and in nearly half of these shootings, the firearm was easily accessible or was not stored securely. Although parents believe that their firearms are well-hidden, 87% of kids know where their parents' guns are kept, and 60% report having handled them. Maryland state law requires that adults secure their firearms from access by minors, and studies have shown that locking guns and ammunition greatly reduces the risk of gun injuries among children and teens. This past December, I asked the principals at my children's schools to circulate Be Smart postcards teaching safer gun practices. Even though MCPS had already approved the content before the pandemic, my cluster will not do a postcard distribution until April. Why are we waiting, and why do parents have to initiate this at each school? MCPS itself should be reminding parents and guardians to lock their guns and ammunition in multiple languages and through written and telephone messages. They should be hosting community Be Smart presentations to spread the word about safe gun practices. We cannot wait to take this simple action to keep our students and staff safe. Please pass a board resolution regarding safe gun storage and requiring MCPS to inform parents system-wide about their responsibility to keep firearms away from minors.
Next is Naomi Nim. Please play the video, I mean the audio.
Naomi Nim, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Silver Spring Justice Coalition Mental Health Committee. I am a psychotherapist and was the founding and executive director of Community Bridges. Young people have experienced unprecedented loss, stress, and disruption to learning during the pandemic, leading to a crisis in mental health and development. Without a doubt, violence in our schools is troubling and tragic. The fear and stress that engenders in parents and school personnel is understandable and could lead MCPS to return to harmful strategies. We absolutely must provide safety for our children, but bringing police back into schools is not the answer. Rather, it is urgent that we fund an infusion of mental health staff at each school. The presence of police signals danger to Black, Brown, and immigrant youth and youth with disabilities. For these young people, when police are present, there is a heightened potential of criminalization of behavioral and emotional difficulties that are rightfully the responsibility of mental health staff, teachers, and administrators. Schools must be compassionate communities where every staff member understands how trauma manifests in young people. When a student's response to trauma is to shut down or to be in persistent state of activation and anxiety, they face barriers to learning and engaging with peers and teachers. We urge MCPS to keep police out of schools. Fast-track hiring mental health staff, whether they are counselors, social workers, or expressive arts therapists, by raising salaries and benefits and by working with regional universities to identify candidates and interns. Fund youth development nonprofits to provide in-school counseling. Establish peer counseling programs. Fund wellness centers in every high school, and develop small learning communities within large schools to build safety and trust. Thank you.
We have eight video testimonies. First up is Joseph Soffer.
Hello, my name is Joey Soffer. I'm a sixth grader at Julius West Middle School in Rockville. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony today on school safety. COVID has been very stressful for kids. We have spent almost two years dealing with isolation, quarantines, and cancellations of many plans, celebrations, sports, and other activities. This has led to so much uncertainty and anxiety for kids. While COVID and virtual school was stressful, we at least had a break in worrying about shelter-in-place and lockdown drills. During the stay-at-home order, many businesses closed, including a printing store right near my neighborhood. In its place, a gun shop opened. We could see lines outside of people waiting for their turn to buy a gun. In fact, in Montgomery County, there was a doubling of handgun applications in 2020 versus 2019, and this trend continued in 2021. My concern is that my peers who are dealing with mental health issues will be able to access guns in their homes and use them to hurt themselves or others. I'm asking you today to commit to steps to educate families about secure storage of firearms. Please pass a resolution regarding safe storage and commit to informing parents of their responsibility to keep firearms away from children and teens. Pre-COVID, this board approved giving out Be Smart postcards, which provide simple tips on gun safety and safe storage. Please reaffirm your approval of distribution and help ensure that the postcard goes home with every MCPS student. Lastly, I ask that MCPS host a presentation on school safety that focuses on gun violence prevention and includes the Be Smart presentation. Please don't wait for another tragedy to happen before you take these simple, concrete steps to keep me and my classmates safer. Thank you.
Next is Melissa Ladd.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Ladd, and I am first and foremost the mom of two Sherwood High School students. I am also an MCPS substitute teacher and the chapter leader for Maryland Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Last Thursday was Dre's 16th birthday, but instead of a birthday party with friends and family, the McGruder High School sophomore spent it in a hospital bed in critical condition after being shot at school. While MCPS has done many things right in terms of school safety and gun violence, there is still much more that can be done. This school year, '21 through '22, has seen the highest number of instances of gunfire on school grounds in American history. This is due in part to the exponential increase of gun sales since 2020. Another significant factor is the increased availability of ghost guns. Unserialized, untraceable firearms purchase easily from a website with just a credit card. As you know, five ghost guns have been recovered on MCPS property this school year alone. In order to make our schools as safe as possible from gun violence, I urge you, the Board of Education, to do the following things. Number one, pass a resolution regarding safe storage of firearms and MCPS's obligation to inform parents and guardians annually of their responsibility to keep firearms out of access of children. Number two, mandate that MCPS promotes and institutes a system-wide distribution of the Be Smart materials, as well as an equitable and central office-driven distribution of materials at each school, providing guidance to administrators to ensure timely and widespread delivery. The Be Smart campaign works to communicate with adults their responsibility for secure firearm storage, and these materials were approved in 2020 by MCPS. Number three, host a presentation or community conversation on school safety and gun violence this spring.
Next is Danielle Veeth.
My name is Danielle Veeth. I'm a parent of two MCPS kids, and I worry every day they go to school. When Sandy Hook happened, my oldest was in preschool. The fear of sending her to kindergarten led us to send her to a small private school where she might be safer. Our kids were there for four years before enrolling in MCPS. Next year, they'll enter middle and high school, and it feels like every year their risk of being shot at school rises. When I was in high school, I had several suicidal friends and took it upon myself to try to help them. I never told... I never told an adult. If a gun had been involved, their temporary pain could have been fatal. Our kids don't tell us everything, but that doesn't mean we're powerless to keep them safe. If we focus on preventing access to guns, anything kids in pain do is more likely something they can recover from. Firearms are the leading cause of death for American kids. It's time for a community conversation on proven methods of preventing gun violence, whether school shootings, unintentional shootings, or suicide. When a kid brings a gun to school, we've already failed them and anyone they hurt. In our goal of safe, supportive schools, let's focus on prevention, not punishment, and resist pressure to do things that don't work just to comfort white parents like me. Research shows SROs don't keep kids safer and hurt our most vulnerable students. What MCPS should do is send home info about safe firearm storage from the National Be Smart for Kids program and require parents to sign something acknowledging receipt. It's been done in Howard and Frederick and in schools across the country serving 2 million students. I also ask you to support state legislation to address ghost guns, HB 425 and SB 387. Maryland Moms Demand Action has fought for this for four years. The incident at McGruder didn't have to happen. Finally, I urge you to read the Everytown for Gun Safety Report, Keeping Our Schools Safe: A Plan for Preventing Mass Shootings and Ending All Gun Violence in American Schools. This is happening on our watch. We need to do more.
Next is Vida Larkin.
I'm Vida Larkin, mother of three MCPS students and a volunteer leader of Moms Demand Action Montgomery County Local Group. The tragic incident at McGruder brought school gun violence to the fore, but our volunteers have been bringing prevention efforts to your attention since 2019. We know that gun violence in schools almost always occurs by current or former students, and their firearms most often come from the shooter's home or the homes of family and friends. I advocate for MCPS to encourage parents to safely store their firearms so students cannot access them. I recommend that the BOE pass a resolution regarding safe storage of firearms in the homes of students because MCPS has an obligation to inform parents and guardians of their responsibility to prevent child access to firearms. MCPS previously approved distribution of postcards in elementary schools informing parents about safe storage and responsible gun ownership, an initiative called Be Smart. They were never distributed due to the pandemic, so I request that the BOE ensure that MCPS commits to promoting and instituting a system-wide distribution of the Be Smart message and helps expedite equitable and reliable school-level distribution of Be Smart postcards. MCPS should also host a community conversation on school safety and gun violence featuring the benefits of the Be Smart message. The pandemic has only exacerbated issues that contribute to school gun safety. Gun sales have spiked, our students spend more time at home, people and students are depressed and anxious. The combination of more guns in the home with increased stressors creates more risk for unintentional shootings, suicide, and gun violence in schools. Taking these simple, vital steps for multiple means of notification of this life-saving information will help reduce school and student gun violence. Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Patterson.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Patterson. I'm an ESOL teacher at Rocky Hill Middle School and a parent of two MCPS students. Today, I would specifically like to address the lack of communication for two of the focus groups in the Equity Model: Black, African-Americans, and Hispanic-Latino students. In the last couple of years, numerous surveys and questionnaires were written in a manner that would elicit bias and misleading answers from these focus groups. The most recent examples of this form of communication was the questionnaire about the instructional snow days. On Thursday, January 27, 2022, the first mention of this survey was sent out in a text buried in the Things to Know communication. There were minimal options to choose from, little information regarding those options, and no opportunity for comments. The survey was kept open for four days. As a parent, I was concerned that a decision had already been made and the survey data would not be used to make a decision representing all Equity focus groups. This thought was confirmed when I read the survey responses. According to the Bethesda Beat, about 46% of the 24,707 responses were from the parents of white students. White students make up about 25% of the district's student body. About 13% of responses were from the parents of Hispanic students, who make up about 33% of the student body. If the communication style is not reaching the families of your African-American, Black, and Hispanic-Latino families, that means that 55% of the district is not being communicated with in an effective manner. Perhaps it is time to pivot and find a different form of communication so the majority of the population will begin to feel connected and valued in the school system. Perhaps that will lead to involvement, engagement, and achievement. The communication style that you have been trying to do is no longer working for the majority of the population. It's time to find a better way and show that you truly value the students and families that make up the majority of our school system. Thank you.
Next is Cara McNulty.
Hi, my name is Cara McNulty, and I am the mother of two of the 160,000 students that are in your care in MCPS. One is a student at Lakeland Park, which was one of the schools that transitioned to virtual learning earlier this January. This was remarkably unfortunate as the absence rate among the students was less than 3%, and there was very little communication about exactly why the school was transitioning to virtual. For me, this was yet more evidence that MCPS is incapable of planning. The reopening that happened in Spring '21 was poorly planned so that many students only had access to live school for less than 20 days during that entire school year. The Fall 2021 reopening was poorly planned with no quarantine guidance included in the initial reopening guide, followed by absurdly aggressive quarantine policies. And the Winter '22 reopening was chaotic as MCPS had no testing plan or ability to manage through a COVID wave. I have three requests for you. There will be another wave. Could you please plan for that now so that you are not reactive as you have been so far? Number two, can you please all read the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia Policy Lab Guidance for In-Person Education in the K-12 Educational Settings, which reflects latest public health thinking and prioritizes live education of students, and minimizes the need for counting cases in our highly vaccinated environment? Number three, please hire the health officer position which you announced in September. After your chaotic reopening in September, you had a five-point plan to address the challenges. Very few of those points have been fully attacked, and the one gaping hole is the lack of a health officer. Given the lack of planning so far, you clearly need expertise in this area. I look forward to an announcement about who will be gaining that position.
Next is Tiffany Kelly.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Kelly, and I have a seventh grader in MCPS. COVID-19 and the virtual learning and isolation that followed it left my son in a state of depression and anxiety like I'd never seen before. When he returned to in-person learning, I was shocked to see that MCPS didn't take this into account, nor two years of watching people that looked like my son be assaulted and murdered by police. They went back to business as usual. My son went into school defiant and not trusting any of his educators. It has been a long, tough battle. But what I got were teachers and professionals that refused to give up on him. They listened to me, they listened to him, they consulted with us, and they helped him figure out what was going on. It has turned him back into an engaged and accomplished student. My son is doing better than he's ever done in his academic history. However, my son cannot walk past a police car. He is afraid of police, as well he should be. We know that police and SROs have more adverse interactions with students that are Black, Brown, and disabled. They are involved in routine disciplinary matters that they have no business being in because no one else wants to deal with it. We need to say, SROs are not safe for all students, they just aren't. We have so much footage and data showing them routinely hurting children for minor infractions that they shouldn't even be involved in. MCPS, we need to reimagine what safety looks like for everyone. We need to be innovative and creative. We own the solutions, the parents, the teachers, and the students. Keep SROs out of school business.
Our final testimony comes from Julie Tadio.
My name is Julie Tadio, and I'm the parent of an MCPS 10th grader. Today, I'm speaking to express disappointment with how MCPS and Acting Superintendent McKnight have handled the recent COVID surge, and to urge that we not hastily engage in a "return to normal" agenda that will put vulnerable students, staff, and families at risk. In early December, we already knew Omicron would be sweeping the county upon our kids' return to school after the break. Yet this time was wasted by MCPS. While Prince George's County had a plan in place to prevent in-school transmission, our kids returned to the same overcrowded, poorly ventilated classrooms and cafeterias where hundreds, even thousands, would be unmasking at the same time indoors for lunch. Instead, MCPS forged ahead, understaffed with teachers and maintenance staff, and literally left kids stranded at bus stops in the cold. Mask provision has been insufficient, and notification of in-school COVID exposures remains faulty at best. Meanwhile, parents had to come up with their own solutions. At Blair, attendance records showed 25% absenteeism in mid-January. It wasn't until more than three weeks into the new year that parents were allowed to keep kids home with excused absences and the good grace of teachers who would share work with them. This latest surge may be subsiding, but even now new subvariants are emerging. Even a mild case for one could result in long-term disability for others. Maryland children have died, and others have lost loved ones. So please ignore the loudest voices in the room, many of whom don't even live in our county or have kids at MCPS, who have been denouncing vaccine mandates and masks in schools. Studies consistently show that indoor masking reduces transmission, and children aren't protesting masks, only a vocal minority of adults with a political agenda. I'm urging you to be proactive, not reactive, for the next stage of the pandemic. To improve ventilation of classrooms, continue to require masking, and offer flexibility for parents and students where and when it is needed moving forward. Thank you for your time.
This concludes our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for Public Comment is Thursday, February the 24th. Sign-ups will open the evening of Thursday, February the 17th. At this time, I'm going to entertain comments from my board members, but I have a comment first, and I believe this comment is for Dr. McKnight and Michelle. At the last board meeting, I thought I remembered asking for the redistribution of the gun storage cards, and I just wanted to know what the status of that was.
Absolutely, President Wolf. So, we initiated the process, working in collaboration with the Office of General Counsel. It went through all of the review process. We communicated with the schools last week to indicate that they will be receiving them, and we anticipate that they are going to go out by next week.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a question for Dr. Nixon. Are you going to do an update on the hiring situation for social workers and psychologists? Because if so, I can defer my question until then.
So as part of our presentation this afternoon on strategic recruitment, Mr. Weeby, we will be addressing it, yes?
All right, thank you. At this time, I have received a message from Ms. Evans that you wanted to... Okay, I'll start with Dr. Jofte. Hey, wait, let's start with Ms. Aluni, and then it comes straight down.
Sure. So I've said this before, but I feel the need to say it again after some of the comments that were made today. And this is me speaking as my own self, and not on behalf of the board, but in response to some of the comments about critical race theory today, I can tell you, as a student of the school system for 13 years, that our school system does not teach critical race theory, the complex legal framework in that sense. What I can tell you is that the way we teach the history of our nation has changed. It's changed because perspectives and stories that have historically been suppressed and not talked about are now being talked about. And the reason for that change is because we've had dozens of students walk through those doors and come up here over years and tell this Board of Education and tell this school system that they don't feel like their history and their stories are being adequately reflected by the content that we teach. So that's why the changes that we've made have been made, and I'm looking forward to seeing our school system continue to do that work with the anti-racist system audit and continue to prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion. That was just my first thing. And then the second thing was, as a follow-up to Ms. Wolf's comments about safe gun storage communication, I appreciated what a few of our representatives from Moms Demand today had to say about making those communications digital. I think that would certainly help with access and also making sure that they're available in a variety of languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jofte.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Aluni's point about CRT. I just have a few points about that. First is I agree with her, CRT is not taught in schools. CRT is a legal and academic theory that, if anything, is being taught in college and beyond, and certainly not being taught in schools in Montgomery County. Second of all, schools and educators certainly do not intend to make children feel guilty or bad about themselves, but it is important that we understand our history and about the contributions of individuals beyond the white culture in our country. I'm Jewish. If we didn't teach about the Holocaust because it made certain populations feel bad, I'd be appalled. And third, and finally, in my mind, protesters against CRT need to come to terms with policies such as those passed in Oklahoma that prevent the teaching of the Tulsa massacres, a major historical event that I personally learned about two years ago. Who benefits by not teaching that type of history? I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
No, I didn't have any comments. My colleague said enough, and then you asked a question that I was going to ask our staff to, or ask senior leadership to address, but it will be addressed during the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Sebastian, okay. Ms. Smendrowski.
Yep, thank you. I want to thank all of our speakers for coming here. I don't want to be repetitive, but I did want to ensure that we are sending out those cards because, and that the public is aware that we already had passed that, you know, request, and that it is being done. I do know that in terms of legislation, our state's attorney is working with the state legislature on passing legislation to ban ghost guns, the sale of ghost guns in Montgomery County or in the state of Maryland. And I would just like to request that perhaps we, both as a board and as a school system, send in a letter of support for that legislation. I was going to say, but I'm just putting it out there while people are here. So if that's something we couldn't do, we will vote on it, I guess, but it is important, and we do need to do it now. So thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I too want to thank the Moms Demand activists for their cogent and very pragmatic testimony today. And I just want to make clear that we are, I think there are maybe some apples and oranges, so I think the school system has some messaging that's been created. And then there's also the Be Smart messaging that the volunteer activists have been supplying to schools for distribution in our elementary schools, taking all the steps to get those postcards approved by MCPS for distribution. And so to the extent that those are two different things, I would appreciate, especially in light of Ms. Chang's testimony, that we make sure that we're communicating with all of our elementary school administrators, the appropriateness and urgency of distributing those cards that are being delivered by volunteers now. I'm not sure why, I mean, I do know we have a couple times a year where we approve mass distribution through our elementary schools of various kinds of messages from community agencies and organizations, but I think this is urgent. And to the extent that those volunteers have already distributed those cards to the schools or are standing ready to do so, if we could make sure that those are being distributed with all deliberate speed, I think that speaks to the moment that we're in instead of waiting. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Daka.
Yeah, I agree with everything that board members have said, particularly about the history, that we would like to have everybody's history included. And I was fortunate enough to be able to teach educators here in Montgomery County, ethnic groups, and American society, which did talk about the contributions, and we need to look at that again. Some teachers feel that they don't know enough about it, and they don't feel comfortable Some teachers feel that they don't know enough about it, and they don't feel comfortable doing it. We've got to do something so that they will include everybody's contributions because this is how the country came to be. And about the gun safety, one of the speakers said that we should put these, put the information out about gun safety with parents and making sure that everything is locked and not accessible, and then ask for them to sign that they have seen this. And we've done this before, having parents sign to say that they have seen and understand what it is we're asking about. And I agree with Ms. Smendrowski and Ms. Harris about the gun safety legislation that Susan Lee, Senator Susan Lee, and Representative Leslie Lopez have put together, and we hope that it will be accepted. There's just such a difficulty with the parts of a gun being sold over the internet. It's very depressing, and that is what happened at McGruder. I don't know whether it was the internet, but the student was able to buy parts of the gun, and that we've just really got to keep an eye on this.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask about the health officer position that was raised. I don't know if that's going to be a part of your report on human resources. I do know, and I want to say this, that every jurisdiction is having trouble hiring a health officer because they have felt so abused during this whole COVID process that it's become very difficult to find people willing to take these positions. But do we have an update on where we are with that?
Good morning, Ms. Wolf, yes, or good afternoon, Ms. Wolf. Yes, I can provide an update on that. We have advertised that position on multiple occasions in a variety of ways and are now in the screening and interview process and are hopeful that we will be able to identify a strong candidate, and we will continue to keep the board updated on the process.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're up to item number eight, and I'm going to ask Dr. McKnight to proceed.
Thank you so much, President Wolf, and I'll ask our OHRD team to join us up front, please. And if we could bring up the PowerPoint presentation. So today, OHRD will be sharing the progress check from our November 9, 2021 presentation. We came and bought some preliminary information that we wanted to expand on specifically around pathways and other projects that the board had an interest in. So we are committed to continuing our efforts to recruit for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And today, the team is going to come forward and talk more specifically about the strategies that we have put in place to focus on those key areas. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to you, Dr. Nixon.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, President Wolf, members of the board, and Dr. McKnight. My team and I are thrilled to be here with you this afternoon to share our updates and our progress since our November meeting. It is with great enthusiasm that we also display some of our marketing materials that we've brought to you today, and you may have noticed that you have a gift bag with you, just a representation of some of the efforts as we move forward in our recruiting efforts. So we very graciously wanted to make sure that you had that with you for this afternoon. Next slide, please. So the work that we continue to cultivate in OHRD began over a year and a half ago when, in July of 2020, the re-imagination began. And there were four key areas that we focused on: talent acquisition and recruitment, onboarding and induction, talent development, and of course, retention. And over several meetings, we have brought forward the recommendations that came out of those work groups. And last November, you will recall that we brought you some updates on some of the initiatives, some of the new positions that you had granted us last spring, and what we were doing with those positions and with that work. Next slide, please. As we share our focus areas today on strategic recruitment, on the Grow Your Own, and on Cohort Inspire, we are also very pleased this afternoon to share with you the recommendations that have come out of our work group that we worked in collaboration with our SEIU partners on, on the future of work, on the enhancement of career pathways, and on the enhancement of what positions we don't even know yet exist, and how do we get our workforce prepared to meet the future? So we're very excited to share those updates with you as well. And while we've talked very much about a re-imagination, we know that the re-imagination is really thinking about new work, thinking about innovation, but what we are very pleased to share today is that we are putting innovation in action. We've done some research with the Center for Creative Leadership, and one of the things that one of their senior fellows has said in his leadership is that over 500 professional Fortune 500 companies were asked, "Where do you see your future?" They all said 95% focused on innovation as our future, but only 14% of the 500 companies polled said, "We're doing it, and we're doing it well." And so with that, under the leadership of Dr. McKnight, our new superintendent, she has tasked us with innovation. What are you doing to innovate? And so with that, this afternoon, we'd like to share what we in OHRD are doing about innovation. And I would like to really thank my team because in the world and in the context of COVID, while we've been navigating that, we've also not forgotten there's a lot of future-forward work to focus on. And so I thank my entire team in OHRD for their tireless efforts in navigating the complexities of where we are, but knowing that we've got so many great places to be in the future. So with that, I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Weeby, Director of Certification and Staffing, to begin the conversation on strategic recruitment.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Nixon. Good afternoon, President Wolf, and congratulations, Dr. McKnight, and to the members of the board. Thank you for having us back. We're pleased to be with you today to share some exciting updates related to the critically important human capital functions of MCPS. We hope that you'll enjoy the gifts from our team, including our recruitment team mask, which I'm modeling for you here because we are all recruiters for MCPS. During the course of this year, we have had a laser-like focus on building and enhancing relationships with our college and university partners, both locally and nationally, as we have returned to in-person recruitment events. When developing our strategic recruitment plan, we were intentional in selecting events, colleges, and universities that would increase the number of diverse candidates in critical shortage areas. As I shared in November, we continue to compete for top talent locally and nationally with other school systems. OHRD and DCS have worked collaboratively with the Department of Communications to brand ourselves as a premier destination employer focused on excellence, diversity, and inclusion. When we're on the road, we want to differentiate ourselves from our colleagues in other systems. As such, we've implemented an ACE candidate experience when we meet stellar potential employees. The ACE candidate receives an accelerated candidate experience that includes a priority screening interview, early access to potential vacancies, and individualized and personal support throughout the process. In a highly competitive recruiting landscape, data and analytics are critically important. We must be deliberate in our approach to attract, recruit, and hire the best candidates. We've learned that when implementing our before, during, and after recruitment strategy, coupled with the ACE experience and open contracts, we're able to secure candidates earlier. For example, the team was recently in Georgia, and in advance of the event, they utilized Handshake, a recruitment platform, to directly connect via email with over 1,600 potential candidates. The campaign shared with students that MCPS would be attending events and encouraged them to meet with our recruiters on-site. As a result, when the team arrived on campus, many candidates recognized us and were able and excited to connect. The events have yielded multiple candidates, several of whom are bilingual, and using strategies like this to proactively interact with candidates in advance of events will continue to allow us to increase our exposure and help familiarize non-local candidates with the MCPS brand. Next slide, please. As Dr. Nixon shared during the board's recent budget work session, we've connected with education students at Howard University. Ms. Maddie Hannington, our recruitment specialist and former Teacher of the Year, worked directly with Dr. January Vance, Director of School and University Partnerships at Howard, to plan an event where students learned about the multiple and varied opportunities that exist within MCPS. We've received positive feedback and look forward to the ongoing relationship with Howard University students for the near and long term. The photo on the slide, and I think it's the next slide where you'll see it during our recent visit. Diversifying our attendance at multiple and varied events has been part of our overall recruitment strategy. We've had success with both in-person and virtual events. Prior to winter break and prior to Omicron, we hosted an in-person job fair focused on support professionals that was very well-attended. We were thrilled to have over 300 participants attend, and the team, which consisted of support from multiple offices, conducted over 190 interviews and hired more than 10 new employees. As we all know, the support of mental health professionals in our schools is a strategic priority focus for the system. We've recently attended the Council for Exceptional Children Conference and Job Fair, and will soon attend the National Association of School Psychologists event in the hopes of continuing to increase the pipeline of candidates. Additionally, we've partnered with OTLS and the Department of Communications and launched a campaign to recruit, attract, and hire mental health professionals that includes increased advertising, the use of LinkedIn and Handshake, and the development of additional promotional materials. We've already hired four social workers with additional candidates in the pipeline and have advertised for new supervisory positions that will allow us to hire recent graduates of social worker programs and allow them to advance their certification while working with and serving our students. We know that internal pipelines and partnerships will also support this critical work going forward, and we continue to collaborate with local colleges and universities to expand internship opportunities. Next slide, please. We continue to interview and hire substitute teachers on a daily basis, as well as part of our bi-weekly job fairs, and we're excited to share that since September, nearly 1,200 applicants have been processed and over 500 new substitute teachers have been hired, increasing our total active substitutes to 3,790. This huge feat could not have been accomplished without the support of the small but mighty substitute office, a team of two who work tirelessly to support our cadre of substitute teachers and our school staff every day. We want to think innovatively as we move forward, and as such, we're pleased to share that with the support of MCEA and the Department of Labor Relations, we were able to increase pay for all substitutes and launch a permanent substitute pilot program. The pilot will identify a group of substitute teachers to be permanently assigned to schools who have been significantly impacted by the substitute shortage. Substitutes in the pilot will receive enhanced compensation, guaranteed work for the remainder of the school year, and access to additional professional development. We've worked with OTLS to analyze trend data and identify the initial set of schools. Additionally, we've held an information session with substitute teachers and continue to survey and recruit for the pilot. We look forward to launching it in the very near future. Next slide, please. Our anticipated results include an increase in overall employee diversity and increased applicants for high-impact schools, as well as higher retention rates. We will measure impact by monitoring participation data for recruitment events, as well as diverse applicant data for teaching and support professionals on a monthly basis and at the conclusion of each hiring season. Next slide, please. Nationwide, the pipeline of teachers faces many challenges, including a 35% drop in teacher prep program enrollment since 2009. Additionally, perceptions of the profession have shifted. In a recent survey, 54% of Americans shared that they do not want their children to become teachers. We must work in partnership to elevate the profession. In collaboration with MCEA, we are exploring strategies to elevate the profession, including partnering with their New Educator Action Team, as well as plans to connect with students in the Minority Scholars Program. We're thrilled to share updates on the Grow Your Own program that we feel will significantly increase the pipeline for teachers and also work to ensure that we're connecting with our students who have an interest in professions other than teaching. We will connect with all of our students to help them see the wide range of opportunities available to them within MCPS. Most recently, in collaboration with the MCPS Partnerships Unit, we presented to over 70 summer RISE students during an out-of-school-time event to share the wide array of career pathways in the MCPS ecosystem. Our Coordinator of Future Employment Initiatives, Ms. Tiffany Ann Goodson, has been collaborating across MCPS offices to develop a strategic timeline for our GYO efforts. As I've shared before, we are all recruiters for MCPS. On this slide, you'll note our new referral program, which was launched earlier this year and is now live on our website, in the MCPS Bulletin and within the Employee ePayStub email. We know that great employees know great employees, and as such, the referral program will allow employees to refer candidates directly to our recruitment team so that they can immediately follow up and determine if the candidate is a match for a position within MCPS. We're excited to share that since its launch, the referral program has received 44 referrals. Next slide, please. MCPS has students now who are enrolled in our Teacher Academy of Maryland programs at Einstein and Kennedy High Schools, who are eager to become teachers and return to MCPS upon graduation. Please take a moment to enjoy a short video that highlights experiences that our recruitment team had during a recent visit to the TAM program at Kennedy High School. Please play the video.
The Teacher Academy of Maryland is an opportunity for students to pursue teaching as a career later in life. It gives them an opportunity to see what teaching is all about. So currently, it's being offered at Kennedy High School here, and then it's in its second year at Einstein High School as well. The students in my program exhibit passion, they exhibit dedication, they exhibit a true interest in learning about teaching.
I want to be a teacher because since I was little, I always played school with my stuffed animals. I always prepared tests and everything, so I just love doing that. And now that I spend time with the students, I just love it even more.
I hope to be a teacher because I would really love to work with students, teachers, future colleagues, that is, and I really have an interest in being able to impact people's lives for the better. I have been in this program for four years. The first year, it was more like theory of how children's brains work. Then, when I had Teaching as a Profession, which is the second year, I was able to learn more about the rules, the guidelines you have to follow as a teacher. Then, you learn more about classroom management, you experience giving your own lesson plan, which was an amazing experience for me. I was so nervous, but I loved it. Then, this year, I am in my internship now. I am actually experiencing applying all of this three-year knowledge to an actual classroom.
What I learned in class, it really applied to my internship.
The first thing that we're doing is we're engaging our students.
Another benefit is, is that with the teachers, I get to see how they communicate with each other, and it really gives you an idea of what you'd be doing in the future.
Kids here at Kennedy, we are actually a family, and they affectionately refer to us as the TAM fam. I am the mother of the TAM fam.
The camaraderie that they have with each other, the camaraderie that they have outside of the building with their mentor, teachers, is an opportunity for them to get the experience now, prior to going to college.
After I finished this four-year program, I walk away with credits that I can use for my college education.
This is our TAM fam family tree, and we invite all of our seniors to put their ham prints on the tree. This is the first year that we've had it in our classroom.
This is our Tree of Future Educators.
So we came here to Kennedy High School today because we're looking for diverse teachers. We really wanted to inspire our students to come back and teach for Montgomery County Public Schools.
Students need to know that they're going to be supported their very first year of teaching, which is something that MCPS does really well.
Today, part of our presentation was to really talk about the different pathways that our students can take to become a teacher. They can become a paraprofessional, they can become a substitute, and then that leads them into the track of becoming a teacher. We have to understand that our students need a lot of support, and that support is also financial. What we need is scholarships for our students so that they can go to university and come back and teach.
The Teacher Academy of Maryland is so important to the teaching profession because we want to grow our own. We want our students to come back to us because they're going to make the best teachers because they know the county and they know what we can do.
It will be a big factor, paying off my college or as well as tuition, as well as getting a good salary here once I come back to Montgomery County.
I plan to come back to MCPS because they have a lot of teacher support.
I would love to come back to teach at MCPS.
One thing that I do tell them is that, you know, no matter what career you choose, you're going to be teaching somebody. Teaching is, it's everywhere.
Thank you, and a big shout-out to Cindy. Thank you, and a big shout out to Cindy Somerville and all of our TAM students, and of course, to MCPS TV for the excellent work that they do in creating these videos. We're really excited and cannot wait to celebrate with these students and others across MCPS who are interested in returning to teach in their home community. As we build out our Grow Your Own program, we're eager to reduce the barriers and think innovatively about the ways in which we can partner with local colleges and universities to ensure our students are set up for success on their pathway back to MCPS. We hope that you'll be able to join us this spring during our signing day as we recognize the importance of the mutual commitment that MCPS and the students are making to return to teach in MCPS. Next slide, please. Grow Your Own will be a multi-pronged, multi-year effort, and we anticipate an increase in overall employee diversity and an increase, of course, in the number of MCPS alumni, teachers, and staff. We will measure impact by monitoring monthly enrollment in the TAM program, as well as career and technical ed programs, dual enrollment, summer RISE. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Jason McCoy, Coordinator of Administrative and Supervisory Staffing. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weeden. Good afternoon, President Wolf, Board Members, and Superintendent McKnight. I'm Jason McCoy, I am the A&amp;S Staffing Coordinator for OHRD. Next slide, please. We are happy to share a few updates on our leadership recruitment and development efforts. We are excited about our information sessions for educators interested in working in high-impact schools. We had approximately 40 current and aspiring leaders participate in our first two sessions. We are arranging opportunities for participants to visit and shadow administrators currently leading in high-impact schools so they can see this important work firsthand in action. Some participants were motivated after these sessions to join Cohort Inspire, in which we will share in a few. We just completed our second application window for a pre-qualified principal list and principal internship. Having multiple application windows allows us to increase opportunity and access for internal and external candidates as we continue to build our principal pipeline. In partnership with our Leadership Development Office, we continue to have recruitment and support sessions for aspiring principals and aspiring assistant principals. To date, we have engaged with over 350 aspiring leaders. This consists of internal and external candidates. OHRD is partnering with MCPS affinity groups. We worked with PODEER for Latinx educators and BON for African-American male educators to promote leadership opportunities in MCPS. Most recently, we had a session with 20 BON members interested in school leadership. And after that one session, we have 20 individual follow-up sessions, which is pretty exciting. We look forward to also working with our other affinity groups that support our diverse leaders in MCPS. We know that our recruitment efforts have to include personal touchpoints and supporting educators at the grassroots levels. In addition to recruiting and hiring diverse leaders, we are also increasing opportunities to support our leaders of color. We have applied to the New Teacher Project that offers a three-year cohort program to support and develop Black and Latinx school leaders. We will be notified to find out if we're awarded this grant. Keep your fingers crossed, and certainly, we look forward to updating you on this exciting opportunity. Next slide, please. Cohort Inspire, we're excited to bring you this exciting innovative initiative. Cohort Inspire is an outgrowth of our Board of Education and Superintendent McKnight's commitment to supporting our high-impact schools. In addition, Cohort Inspire was created as a result of the most poverty-impacted schools project team's work. Cohort Inspire was collaboratively developed with MACAP, school-based administrators, central office leaders, and input from the Black and Brown Children's Coalition. This is an amazing opportunity to support and inspire, just as the name of the cohort is, inspire current and aspiring school leaders interested in leading in high-impact schools to participate in dynamic leadership development. When we were here in November, we were in the planning stages for Cohort Inspire. We are excited to update you that Cohort Inspire has started. We had over 50 applicants and 40 are participating in this first cohort. We have a diverse group of administrators. I'm sorry, we have a diverse group of participants that consists of administrators, principals, assistant principals, assistant school administrators, as well as central office leaders and teacher leaders. We have a fantastic group of individuals who are extremely excited about leading in high-impact schools. We had an amazing first session in January. We kicked off our first session with the author of High Impact Leadership for High-Impact Schools, written by Pamela Zalazar, who also was our guest speaker. And we have included a copy of the book in your gift bags. We hope that you will have an opportunity to look over. This will give you an idea of some of the cohort's work. In addition, we are excited about additional guest speakers to share best practices and research. Joining us for future sessions will be Dr. Lewis McCoy, Professor at NYU, and author of Inequities in the Promised Land: Race, Resources, and Suburbian Schooling; Pamela Price, a former community school principal in Harlem, New York; as well as our very own MACAP President, Dr. Handy, and other MCPS leaders. We want to share some of the participants' excitement for our first session, and we'll promise next time we'll bring you a video. So some of the comments in terms of the feedback. I found it energizing to engage in conversations about equity and high-impact leadership with a small group of leaders whom I don't see every day. I enjoy collaborating with fellow leaders and overall receiving meaningful professional learning. The ability to hear different perspectives, participants being excited about the opportunities, and new ways to frame high-impact schools. The opportunity for collaboration with other leaders and hearing different perspectives and ideas. I also value our guest speaker, Dr. Zalazar, about what is needed at high-impact schools. And the last comment, it was fantastic to see such a large group of people all come together to support the much-needed change in our schools. We look forward to informing you of Cohort Inspire's progress. We have another session coming up in a couple of weeks, and the participants are excited about this opportunity. Next slide, please. We are excited to announce a new partnership with Bowie State University Doctorial Program in Educational Leadership. This partnership was established by our Higher Educational Partnership Office in OHRD. There was an amazing response to this opportunity with over 50 applicants for 20 available slots. This is also a very diverse group of school-based administrators, central office leaders, and teacher leaders. In working with our Professional Growth Systems colleagues, mentors will be assigned to new principals to support their growth and development. These mentors will be MCPS principal colleagues and serve in a non-evaluative support role. Assigning these mentors is based on feedback from our first-year principals and MACAP. We are committed to ongoing professional learning that is job-embedded and self-directed for our experienced principals, and this is based on the feedback we've received from our veteran principals in our focus group meetings. We look forward to working collaboratively with the principal supervisors and looking at existing spaces and structures to offer this professional learning based on data, needs, interests, and certainly, input from the principals. We will continue to update you on, I'm sorry, we will continue to update you as this evolves over time. Next slide, please. We continue to strive towards these results in our leadership recruitment and development efforts. We anticipate an increase in administrative diversity. We are excited about our work resulting in an increase in the number of applicants for high-impact schools, as well as retention rates. We will continue to monitor participation data in our support sessions and in our current and future cohorts for leading in high-impact schools. We will measure the impact of our work monthly and at the end of the hiring season, and our work is directly aligned to our school system's focus and commitment to our most poverty-impacted schools, as well as our professional and operational excellence. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to my colleague, Natalie Bordereau, Career Pathways Program Specialist. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good afternoon to the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. McKnight. I am Natalie Bordereau, Career Pathways Program Specialist in OHRD. And as an introduction, we'd like to play a short video for you. Please play that video.
The Career Pathways Program is a one-on-one resource for support professionals who are interested in growing their career. Some services that are provided through Career Pathways are resume building, helping to prepare for an interview, researching positions in MCPS, and helping them prepare for their interview if they're close to selection. If an employee is interested in having a mentor, I can match them with a mentor that would be able to talk to them about either a position or help them research further into a department that they've worked in before to give them advice.
So for supporting service professionals who might be interested in becoming a teacher, there are partnerships that are available through our Higher Education University partnerships.
Our ultimate goal is that we make MCPS a destination employer where employees can have their entire career with us so that they enjoy what they're doing, that they feel trained in what they're doing, and want to spend their entire careers with MCPS.
It gives us a challenge and a desire to stay within MCPS rather than search outside. It provides within support for trainings, even advanced schooling, and basically, coaching me and giving me the belief that they have in me, I have in myself to continue and ultimately get my gold job and want to remain within MCPS.
The Career Pathways Program is an initiative that focuses on providing high-quality business and career services that are essential to the educational success of students and promotes improving the efficiencies and competencies of support professionals in their careers with MCPS. The Career Pathways Program acknowledges the importance of meeting MCPS employee and operational needs, as well as raising the standard of living for support professionals and their family. The program is led by the Career Pathways Program Specialist, me, providing guidance to all support professionals for setting career goals and planning. Employees have greatly benefited from the services provided by Career Pathways Program over the last six years. But the program has reached its potential with the current aligned resources. Knowing the current workforce needs of the school system, Career Pathways needed to learn from stakeholders specifically what employees need to reach their greatest potential while meeting the operational excellence expected by the board. Next slide. In an effort to seek stakeholder feedback on how the program can better serve support professionals, OHRD conducted 10 workgroup sessions with offices, divisions, and committees whose work is aligned with the operations of the school system. After this listening tour, the nine-member workgroup with representation from all three associations and unions was convened to process through the feedback from the original workgroups and make a recommendation on the expansion of services to support professionals through the Career Pathways Program. I'd like to personally thank everyone who contributed. Next slide. These combined efforts resulted in an expansion in four areas: greater systemic career planning outreach, training, continuing education, and mentoring needed to specifically address hard-to-fill MCPS positions. In addition, and to support efforts aligned in Dr. McKnight's vision for the district to be a destination employer and train current support professionals for the future of work, the Career Pathways Program is recommending three well-defined operational and technical pathways and additional full-time employees to execute an organized training and mentoring program. These pathways to the trades will enhance an employee's skills and knowledge that can lead to mastery in their current position, career growth, and advancement in critical need areas. The proposed pathways will provide systemic supports matched to our organizational goals. To effectively deliver the pathway to the trades opportunities to the inaugural cohort of 25 to 30 support professionals, MCPS will need to expand the services currently provided by Career Pathways. This expansion will allow for actual on-the-job training, mentoring, internal professional development, and external coursework at Montgomery College, career development and advice, and job shadowing. Support professionals will receive high-level experiences in a specific trade to be highly qualified potential candidates for current and future job vacancies with MCPS. Candidates will receive individual resume support, interviewing preparation training, and an intense internship to learn the skills needed to perform the job duties on day one. Next slide. Research says that nearly one-half of employees reported that career advancement opportunities within their organization were very important to their job satisfaction and morale. The Career Pathways Program looks forward to serving as a vehicle for professional and operational excellence in MCPS. Thank you for this opportunity to share our updates today. Ms. Wolf, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask my board members if they have any questions. So... Dr. Doc.
Well, I don't have any questions. I really want to thank you for all the work that you're doing. These are ideas that have been around for a while, but you actually, Dr. Nixon, have caused these things to happen, and I really appreciate it. I think that the telling statistic that is really important here, well, 35% reduction in teacher preparation programs. And I've noticed that when we go to the fairs, they are always promoting their IT, their science, their math, but they are not talking about education. So there's no wonder that we have a shortage of teachers and have had it for a while. And I just wanted also to say that Madeline Hannington was on here as one of your workers in the career path. She was a Teacher of the Year here in Montgomery County about three years ago. She was so dynamic. But even before that, she won that $25,000 prize, and I can't remember what it was called, I don't know what it was called, but she was at Gaithersburg Middle. So she's been a star all along, and these are the kinds of people that we think you're working with. And I like the program Grow Your Own at Kennedy, and is it TAM TAM? What, TAM TAM? Oh, okay, thank you.
Teacher Academy of Maryland TAM.
Anyhow, I think that's really important and something we have been talking about. And leadership recruitment and career opportunities and mentors, these are all wonderful things, and I'm so glad that you're tapping into those because I think that can only make things better.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you. A couple of specific questions, and one builds on something Dr. Doc just mentioned. Fascinated by the Teacher Academy of Maryland at Kennedy and Einstein, I'm assuming the name Teacher Academy of Maryland means it's not unique to us. So this is a program that comes through MSDE?
Yeah, so it does come through MSDE, and they partner closely with Towson University, and so this is something that's offered at high schools across the state of Maryland. And there are a variety of different programs that, you know, what used to be Future Educators of America and things like that, Educators Rising, different programs, but this is something that's specific to Maryland and through MSDE.
And I was interested in the video. Some of the students seem to be mentioning that they were getting college credit at some point in the program?
Yeah, so there are a variety of different ways, obviously, to get those college credits. One is to be enrolled in a dual enrollment program with Montgomery College in that Associate of Arts and Teaching Program. So it's possible that that's, in addition to the experience through the TAM program, there are opportunities to get some college credits toward the way. And that's sort of what, one of the ideas, as we think about the ways in which we might be able to expand access and opportunity for students is through both that TAM program, but what are those additional partnerships that we might be able to continue to grow that both through MC and some of our other local colleges and universities? So we are also in communication and talks with the Universities of Shady Grove in addition to MC.
And I, do we have plans to expand? You know, those, so Kennedy and Einstein are both in the DCC. Are we looking to move?
So our goal would be definitely to be able to have an opportunity to expand these programs, and whether it's done through a TAM or through Educators Rising, we're trying to look at other programs that may be beneficial for us to engage in. So yes, the overall goal is to certainly look at how many different kinds of pipelines that we can build and ways that we can aspire to have them in all of our high schools would be ideal so that as we continue to grow Grow Your Own, we have an opportunity to, as you saw in this video, that, I wish I could bottle that energy and enthusiasm.
saw in this video, that I wish I could bottle that energy and enthusiasm. And if there were a way to have it in every one of our high schools, that's what ultimately part of this vision is in OHRD, is to find a way to be able to grow it and expand it.
Yeah, thank you. I think maybe, Mr. Weeby, I can reach out to you directly and get just a deeper understanding of the components of that program and what it would take to do.
Yeah, certainly. And of course, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize our colleagues in OTLS and the Career and Technical Ed Office because they do ultimately are engaged with the work of TAM as well so they'd be able to support that request.
Yeah, and one question I had, so you talked about, you know, the coming up with a mutual commitment at the end of these students' trajectory through the TAM program. And I'm just wondering, what are we committing to do for them after they leave us after their four years? And we definitely want them to keep that energy and to go forward and then to come back to us. So what is it that we're, if it's a mutual commitment, what are we committing to do?
So ideally, what we would love at some future point to be able to do is to provide scholarship. I heard mention of that. And as we look at how to perhaps plant some seed money in future budgets, that's something that we would love to be able to explore. In the interim, what we can commit to at a signing day would be that the students who complete successfully a program with positive cooperating teacher evaluations at the end of their student teaching experience, that they would be guaranteed an open contract with us. And then we would also like to explore ways of bringing back these students to help support summer school through TPT so that we can make sure that they understand that there are multiple ways in which they can have a presence in an MCPS setting. The other thing that's critically important that we would also foster and nurture through OHRD is to make certain that as a continued part of the recruiting, say we have in this first cohort, I'm just saying, round numbers here, 20 students who are going to go to their future universities, we would commit to make certain that we knew who those 20 students were, that we have a very active distribution list, that when these students come back, say, for their winter break, their spring break, that they have an opportunity to touch base with someone in OHRD. And as they plan for their summer, if there is a way that they are going to be in the area and living here in the summer, and we can leverage TPT funds to have them work and support the summer school programming so we get to know them better, they get to know us better, they continue to commit to their teaching practice, that at the conclusion of their bachelor's degree, that they would have an open contract with us. But I think the key feature, Ms. Harris, is that we would create an infrastructure through OHRD where they would always have a contact person because they will meet other students at their universities who are teachers, and they will bring a friend. So those are some of the things that we can commit to right now as we continue to grow the programming and as we continue to see what we can invest in it financially. Hopefully, that commitment will evolve over time, but in the short term, that's what we can offer.
And are we thinking about expanding to create mentorship partnerships with students? So partnering them with a teacher mentor with during, as they're going off to, on their educational journey, and then possibly even apprenticeships when they're coming back to work alongside that mentor teacher?
Yeah, so I would say that certainly there are those opportunities. Part of the TAM program is that they have some of those experiences within the system. But yes, to your point and to Dr. Nixon's point, we want to build out a program that's going to be a progression that includes experiences, especially for those students, because we know they'll be returning home, right, during the breaks and during different opportunities, to be able to think about how we can be creative about making sure that we provide connections with stellar teachers so that they can have those experiences and then ultimately come back to us.
Again, I've got a lot of questions. I'll just ask one more. So looking at all the overarching areas of work, and you talked about you've done some recruiting for social workers and gone off to different conferences and the event with Howard and the administrators, the Cohort Inspire group. As part of that work, are we sort of intentionally making sure that we ask potential professionals who might be coming to us what, in their view, would make us that destination employer to get their real insights? And I know, for instance, we have with our mental wellness professionals, there's a deficit of those professionals for us even to try to attract, and we can't try to attract some of our, you know, those professionals who work for our partners to come to us. But are we asking them what would have made them think about coming to us initially and maybe in the future?
Thank you, Ms. Harris. So I can speak to the leadership recruitment piece, and then the team can add their comments too. As we think about the holistic employee value proposition, right, what in our branding makes someone want to come to us? When we first started having these focus groups with our principals, the things that we heard overwhelmingly from principals was that if I'm a veteran principal in my career, I want continued professional development. I don't want to grow stale in a position. If I've done something for 11 years, I don't want to feel like there's nowhere else for me to go. So we've heard, and some of the comments that Mr. McCoy shared, principals that attended that Cohort Inspire information session, many of them were veteran principals who were looking for that spark, that new enthusiasm for something, and I think they found it in Cohort Inspire. In the book study, we got really positive feedback on the book study and in the Speakers' Bureau because what people like to hear is what's happening across the country? They want to know that they're not in it alone, there are other-like experiences happening across the nation, and what can we learn from each other? The other thing is this sense of autonomy where creative problem solving was really important. And so I think part of the book study and the Speakers' Bureau discussion allows for this, how can I solve issues at my school differently? And this whole spirit of thinking about things innovatively, I think, trickles down as well. We don't have to do it the way we've always done it. And so what we heard from the principals is what can we get at this point in time in our careers? And I think the other, the last piece that I would add is that whole professional development component. I have this professional conference I'd like to attend, and now that things are slowing down, hopefully with COVID cases falling, people want to get out there again. They want to be part of professional organizations. They want to, actually, they want to be mentors to other people, too. That was the other thing. I've learned so much, and I want to share it with someone. So hearing this feedback from the focus groups, I think, is what really helped to start kind of build the spirit of Cohort Inspire. And the one thing, the other thing that I just will share too is, and I am not able to go on a lot of recruiting trips, once upon a time I did, but one of the things that we know in this new generation of educators coming up through the ranks, what's very important for them in their future employer is that they have a sense of corporate social responsibility, that they work for a school district that is committed to things like being inclusive, that they work for a school district that puts children first. Those kind of overarching themes, people want to work for an organization that has an inspirational leader that is not afraid to be first at doing something and taking the lead. And so those are the things, the stories that we hear, and I think that's what helps to make our employee value proposition for future candidates really important. I mean, people are struggling with substitutes, and we have too, but we now have over 3,000 in our pool, and we couldn't say that two months ago. And so I think this is part of, I think, what's changing and having a dedicated recruiting team, which we've never had in MCPS. We have two full-time recruiters, thank you, that can really, their sole focus is this recruiting. And that's a testament to your vision and to your commitment, saying that this is what we needed. And I've been in two other districts that don't have dedicated sole recruiting teams, and we've been able to do that. And that's not a typical characteristic of a K-12.
Well, thank you. And maybe you can also tell them they're looking for, to work for a company with a social conscience about our new aggressive sustainability policy.
Absolutely. The green initiatives are high on students' minds that are coming out of bachelor's programs right now, truly.
I just want to follow up on one thing Ms. Harris said. TAMs is going to be at Kennedy and Einstein?
It is.
Well, I understand that, but when is the plan to expand? Because, you know, I'm concerned about the lack of opportunities available all over the county.
Yes, agreed. And so that's our current work. We would love to be able to expand to a few more schools next year and actually put a phased-in project timeline so that we can continue to grow this. And again, whether it's a model like TAM or something like Educators Rising, we are looking at what some of these programs can be in the way that we grow this pipeline. But these two programs in their current form are really great base models. Genevieve Floyd has done a tremendous job. And so what we want to be able to do through the OHRD team as well is help wherever we can to recruit for those programs, but also figure out other ways where we can grow these in other schools. That is definitely something that we would like to do.
Well, I would like to see some opportunities available all over the county because, as you know, that's been a concern of mine. One other thought, and then I'm gonna get to you. I saw some students present that were in this program. I can't remember whether they came from St. Mary's or...
Mount St. Mary's.
Mount St. No, it wasn't a college.
I was gonna say...
It was one of the local school districts. They presented at Mabe, and their students were actually doing student interning of younger students. Do we offer that opportunity?
So, yeah, so it's part of the program that internship piece is there. So it is consistent across the state in terms of the curriculum and the different requirements. And Towson University is the university that is working closely, and they are actually working with Educators Rising, which is out of PDK.
Because they were doing a whole semester of teaching. I was amazed they were high school seniors. So thank you. Ms. Mandrowski?
Yep, I have a couple of questions. Really quick question, the Cohort Inspire, can anyone join that?
Yes, and MCPS, so we started out just internal, but we have those information sessions for leading in high-impact schools, which we had two so far. That's open to internal and external.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how people joined it and if it's something that, you know, anyone who's interested can join. To the point about expansion of the program, how are students for the Growing Our Own programs, can anyone, is this one of those, are these two programs at these two centers something that kids from other schools can apply to if they want to and be part of the program? I know you mentioned that you, we've kind of taken it as far as the resources allow, but in terms of expanding it, so if I go to Gaithersburg High School, for example, can I apply to participate in this program at Kennedy? Or no? You have to be, that has to be your homeschool?
Yeah, I believe right now that it's just, it's limited to those two schools. I don't believe, but we can follow up and get back.
Okay, thanks. And I would love to have that conversation as to what kind of resources it would be involved in terms of expanding it, either to a, anyone can apply from any school or putting as many programs across the county as possible. And then my other, is this a four-year program or a two-year program?
So I'll have to, we'll have to get back to you on all of the details. Like I said, it's not a program right now that is out of OHRD's per se, but we can certainly reach out to Dr. Floyd and get some additional specifics for the board.
Oh, okay.
And Ms. Mandrowski, if I just wanted to remind the team that this is the first year we've had a dedicated, full-time person in OHRD working on the Grow Your Own pipeline. And so one of the things that Tiffany Anne has been doing is working with Mr. Murphy and these programs to get the recruiters in there, to work with the students to get to know them and figure out where they're going so that we can start building those relationships with them as they leave, learn more about those internal programs to be replicated, and trying to leverage the resources in OHRD to help do any of that as we partner with OTLS. Additionally, one of the other outreach components is talking to students as young as middle schoolers. We'll recall that on any given career day, you know, we would bring in guest speakers from L walks of life, but we would never really highlight the teacher to talk about being the teacher. And so one of the things that we, and Mr. Weeby alluded to this, is we have partnered and have been in conversation with MCEA around, we need to work collaboratively to really flip the script and change the narrative on what it means to be a teacher, to elevate the profession, how we talk about being a teacher, how to dispel the myth in sometimes the way that it might be characterized in the media, that this profession is kind of the seed of all professions, and we need to work with our union partners across the board in all three because it really is imperative that we're facing a possible shortage, and that is daunting. But then we also want to make sure that as young as middle schoolers, that we are reminding those students that this is a noble profession, that this is a profession that has many opportunities for growth and expansion. And that's part of what this idea of the MCPS branding is, the way that we show employees and show our students that we are hiring, that we are a place where you can commit your entire 30 years to. And the things that we have and the way that we market above and beyond salary is the compensation package, tuition reimbursement, helping people to see, and I think that's part of what Tiffany has been doing, working with the teachers as young as middle school kids and building out that vision, and helping them to know if you're interested in something like TAM or as we grow these programs in our high schools, maybe through Educator Rising, that look at this pathway, earning this college credit and then also becoming a teacher. And those are things that we continue to work on. But again, having someone fully committed to a Grow Your Own pipeline, also a very unique feature in OHRD that came out of the re-imagination and out of the support of Dr. McKnight and the board to say, this is an important enough project that we're going to commit someone to it. And in these last eight months, I think we've made great progress, but Ms. Wolf, to your point, this is something that we want to grow, and part of our three-year plan is how do we get this or a program like it in more schools?
Yeah, I appreciate that because part of what I was asking is how we're promoting it to make sure, particularly because the scholarship aspect, I feel like, is a big one. I know it's great that we do tuition reimbursement, but I talked to so many students who say they'd love to do that, but they're not going to be able to afford to go to college necessarily. So making sure that if it involves, like, participating in the partnership, the dual enrollment partnership with Montgomery College, that they are aware that that's something that can happen before it's too late and all of a sudden they're not able to participate and benefit from it. And so just making sure that we're doing that. And then my last question is just, what type of certification do they graduate with? Or do they graduate with anything? Like, is there anything that they graduate from high school with while they continue their higher education years that allows them to start working with us right away? Like, you know?
So a great question. And so certainly, there are a few different pieces that we could connect on. One thing to consider is paraeducator substitutes, right? So substitutes in a paraeducator role is something that, coming out of high school, we could certainly look at. The other thing that I think we have been trying to think creatively around is what are, you know, as I said, a sort of multi-pronged or multiple pathways to coming back to us? And it may be that, yes, they're coming in and they're working as a support professional to start, and then if they're in a permanent position, they have access to benefits and they have access to the tuition reimbursement, which can support sort of moving forward through the pathway. But what we want to do is break down any of those barriers and help our students understand what are all of those different opportunities and pathways because, as we all know, it's overwhelming. And if you are lucky enough to know at 17 that you do want, know what you want to do, then we shouldn't have any, anything in the way because ultimately, when we talk about that mutual commitment, we need them, right, to come back because of, for a variety of reasons. But we also know that 60% of teachers teach within, you know, very close to their home. So we know that there's really a potential here to build out a pipeline that hopefully, you know, we're better to come back and teach than MCPS where you went to school.
Thank you all very much for this work. It's so important. And to Dr. Daka's point, you know, it's something we've been talking about for so many years, and as I sit and reflect on how it's progressed, I'm extremely grateful for the fact that we are here where we are, and I look forward to seeing how the future of it goes.
I have a follow-up question to Ms. Mandrowski's, too. Is this an opportunity for the virtual academy to be considered? Is this an opportunity for the Virtual Academy to be considered through the Virtual Academy?
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Other schools more quickly?
Virtual TAM.
Oh. We can certainly look into it, absolutely. We're all about innovation here. If there's anything that we'll do, we'll take a stab at it for sure.
The three-year plan just sounded a little long for programs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, so, right. And I know that three years sounds like a long time and it is. It's just, you know, being mindful of the pacing and what things would cost certainly. But Virtual Academy, we can certainly look into that, absolutely.
Ms. Sylvester.
I cannot emphasize enough how grateful I am for this presentation and all the work that you have put into it. Dr. Nixon, when you told me about the Grow Your Own that you did at Fairfax County Public Schools, I think that was maybe during the pandemic or before the pandemic. And then the pandemic came and we couldn't really implement it. But at last, we have a plan and some very concrete goals to establish. So I am just delighted with this presentation to hear. Thank you, Dr. McKnight, for putting the money for the staff, for HR, because this doesn't happen on its own. This needs dedicated people. And it's so important because we are a people organization. If we don't have people, we can't operate. And so I just can't thank you enough for the budget, the people, and your excellent work in both recruiting, the Grow Your Own. That video brought tears to my eyes. Those are our future teachers. Those are the teachers that are bilingual, bicultural. They already live here. They know the cost of living, so. And so this is where our future workforce is. And I cannot emphasize enough that this was a right move and we have to stick with it and be relentless and make sure that we are successful. We did a pilot with scholarships a couple of years ago, five, six years ago. I don't know what happened, but let's not let that happen again because it fizzled and we had to start over again. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. I do have some questions that I had already shared with you, Dr. Nixon. And that is around the work around new principals and your efforts to bring leaders to high-poverty schools. And I commend all of your efforts to do that. I wondered, what have you learned from your focus groups about what they are telling you it will take for experienced principals to move to a high-poverty school?
So I will start and then I will ask Mr. McCoy to fill in as he has been facilitating the Cohort Inspire meetings and has been actually working with these principals face-to-face. I think, and I alluded to it a little bit earlier, some of the things that we are hearing is that there is this continued need to grow in their career. There is a continued need, if they are going to make a change in their career, whether they are going from elementary to middle or middle to high, that they would like, I don't know if assurances or guarantee is the right word, but they really just want the confidence, I think that's the best word. They want the confidence that they will be supported and coached and nurtured and mentored. And you may recall in November, when we presented, we had Dr. Moran and Dr. Dyson with us. And they really showed us about the way that OTLS has like deployed this model of support to schools. That's the continued support that our principals are saying that they need. And the way that OHRD can help to fill that is facilitating the professional development opportunities that they have and making sure that we're being intentional about the way in which we are providing experiences for them to learn from, to benefit from, to grow their careers in. And then also, I think one of the things that they really talk about is, because no one wants to get stale in their practice, they really want the opportunity for these professional learning communities. They don't get to see their peers enough. I think what happens is, especially in the context of COVID, they will call their principal colleagues, how are you handling this? What are you doing about that? And those are all very transactional kind of managerial things. I think where they don't have a lot of time is to really just talk, oh, I'm sorry. Where they really don't have a lot of time is to really focus on those professional conversations about instruction, about how to help move instruction. What are you doing about inclusiveness in your school? Those kinds of conversations that really move the needle in terms of making environments in schools better for children, that's where they, that's where some of that community is that they're looking for. So Jason, do you want to add?
Just to echo, I mean, certainly Cohort Inspire has kind of created that space. So that's been sort of a sampling of the spaces that we need to create for our, not just aspiring administrators, but especially for our veteran administrators. They're looking for those places and spaces, right? And we want to work closely with OTLS. As Dr. Nixon shared, they talked about the shoulder-to-shoulder support, actually coming into the school collaboratively, working to develop and to really promote the development of the principals. We have learned from Cohort Inspire that, you know, that space of being able to talk problems in practice, being able to brainstorm with colleagues is something that they really want more of. So we plan to work with OTLS and the principal supervisors because this cannot be done in isolation. Just like we talked about, everyone's a recruiter, everyone is a developer as well. So working in partnership with OTLS and the principal supervisors, looking at our current spaces and structures and how we can sort of create some of that space for more dialogue, more embedded professional learning. I mean, that is certainly something that is very attracted, attractive to our veteran principals.
That's good for all principals, right?
It's good for all, and especially--
Hearing you say support from OTLS, but also peer support, what people, other practitioners are experiencing in their schools.
Absolutely, and especially as we look at our high-impact schools. You know, we have a lot of excitement about future sessions for Cohort Inspire where we look at problems of practice, where some of our principals who are in the Cohort Inspire are actually going to be assisting us with the problems of practice. We have other principals hosting visits for members of Cohort Inspire. So, you know, we want to use some of those elements of that cohort to help guide us for additional professional learning. So the professional learning certainly is a major piece. You know, I know there's been discussions about exploring monetary incentives. You know, certainly, you know, working closely with MACAP and through the labor negotiations. You know, that's a discussion that will happen in that space through those proper channels. And another thing that we've heard from administrators is just that autonomy. Each school is different and, you know, giving principals tools to be creative as in regards to staffing. And that autonomy around staffing is something that they have also expressed.
Thank you. And this related question, maybe it's the same answer. But one of my concerns is that you go through all this effort of attracting a highly qualified new principal for a high-poverty school, and then they turn over quickly. And so what is the work that is required to make sure that after going through all this effort to get them to a high-poverty school, that they're going to stay for whatever the minimum number of years? What are, what is the retention work look like so that they stay? And if they're successful, where we want them to be with our students?
So I'll start and then Jason, okay. So the retention effort comes from several places. I think it will come from the work that our partners in OTLS do as they work on that kind of day-to-day, shoulder-to-shoulder work with the principals in the schools. So that comes from the support that is given to the principal in that regard. I think it comes from asking and making sure that as part of our engagement strategy, that we are asking principals how they feel about where they are and where they're going and what they might need to continue being successful. I think that's, part of that whole, what I would call engagement in that work really is about, are you, beyond the job satisfaction, how are you kind of fulfilling yourself professionally and personally? Do you have the right work-life balance? How are we being very keen on making sure our leaders are not burning out? And if we're seeing that, how, what kind of interventions are we doing? How are we monitoring that? We talk obviously about the social, emotional, you know, integrity of our students, of our teachers, of all of our staff members. I think that's part of it too. The principalship is a very difficult job. So how are we being mindful about where those difficulties are and what other supports they may need? And I think too, we talked about, and this is often part of the conversation, the financial incentives. Are there ways to incentivize it? We know that through the blueprint, there are going to be opportunities for incentives for teachers through the pathways, the career ladder pathways. Those are going to, you know, be part of perhaps the blueprint issues for administrators as well. And we're certainly going to be meeting with MACAP to talk about ways in which we can, you know, explore expanding that too. So I think it's, there are a lot of things that we know and have that contribute to how someone is engaged in the work. Engagement is not always monetary. Engagement is about creativity, autonomy. Where do I see myself in this work? Am I making a contribution? And I think our job collaboratively with OTLS, when principals are reaching out to us, when they are asking questions about their careers, when they are asking questions about their contributions, to be excellent thought partners with them and finding ways to keep them motivated. I think those are, I think it's a big answer. But I think engagement is something that comes not only from the support they feel from the superintendent to the way in which the board supports schools. I think it's all of that all together.
I would just encourage you as a final thought here, just to track that as a key indicator because it's a lot of work to recruit, to train, and then there's a big turnover. So retention should be just as important as recruitment. Thank you.
Ms. Looney.
So I am so excited about this Grow Your Own program. And I'm excited because I spend a lot of time visiting our high school students at their schools. And I'll mention our initiatives that we're doing in OHRD sort of offhandedly. And I will see students' eyes literally light up, especially when we talk about how we're not just talking about making teaching a career that's valuable and enriching, but we're putting money where our mouth is. And I think students see that and they're inspired and they see doors and possibilities open that weren't previously available to them. And so I know that we can't bring this program in person to all schools, all 25 high schools. But I also know, and I know we all know, that we have students who are interested in pursuing teaching as a profession, working for MCPS and other ways at all 25 of our high schools. So Ms. Wolf got to it before I could, but I really, really think, I talk about the Virtual Academy a lot because I really think that this academy has so much potential to relieve inequities that we see in course offerings across the district, to open doors for students, right? And I really would like this to be one of the first things that we do with the Virtual Academy when we talk about not just enrolling our 3,000 full-time students, but using this as an opportunity to expand specialized programs. I really think that that could be a big thing that we could do. And an innovative thing that we could do, as Dr. Nixon, you said. This is such innovative work that we're doing. I had a question about Signing Day. I know this year with our budget, it may not be possible and it probably isn't going to be possible to offer tuition upfront for students who want to come back and work for us. So in the meantime, for this year with our pilot Signing Day, what's the incentive for students to be guaranteed an open contract? Doesn't that just limit their options in wanting to teach elsewhere after they graduate? What's the incentive?
So I don't want them to think about it as limiting. I want them to think about it as guaranteed employment. And I want them to think about it as not only guaranteed employment, but I think we alluded to it earlier, that for many of the students that come through the program, they look at it as being of service to their schools, to their communities, to the places where they lived. Ms. Looney, back in December, when in this room, we had the members of the SGA, I think from the different schools.
Yes, yes.
From that night alone, I've had outreach from three students--
I'm sure you have.
--who have, I've met with or am going to be meeting with in the next month who want to talk about teaching, who aren't necessarily in these programs, but through the various conversations that we had rotating, have expressed, how do I get into teaching? What would I need to do? So while Signing Day doesn't mean somebody goes off to the University of Maryland and then all of a sudden has to move to California, you know, that life happens. But where we can intervene and where we can be cheerleaders and where we can say to 21 and 22-year-olds, we need you. Your school community needs you. Montgomery County needs you. We want to be able to have that opportunity to say that from K to 12, we educated you. We've invested in you and we know that you're-- You know, for somebody who has in their heart that they want to be a teacher, that means something, right? That means to me that they have a compassion and a capacity for empathy and connection and relationship building. And I think that their communities matter to them. So my hope would be that for the students who go into their university lives and come back in the summers or come back at their various and different breaks and connect with us, we're going to keep investing in that relationship because for us, as we say in OHRD, the touch points is what really matters. We are a people organization. And the thing that we have to remember is that when you are in an exchange with someone, even if you are 25, 30,000, one of 25,000, in those moments where I'm eye-to-eye with you, you want to feel like you matter and you have a place and your contribution means something. And so that's what we do in our recruiting trips. And that's what I would say to these students at Signing Day. We want you. We want you to come back. If life takes you somewhere, we wish you well. But that's what I would say to that. And our hope is that as we grow this, that one day we'll be able to do a scholarship and we're going to grow that. We're going to continue hammering away at that and finding ways to do that. But in the meantime, we can do this and then, you know, our plan is to certainly do more.
I really appreciate that. I think that's a beautiful answer. And I've mentioned this to you before, but if you need a longer list of students, I can get you. I can get you a list of students.
I want that list. Thank you for the email.
Yeah, and just as a final note, I really hope that we can continue to think about how this work connects with our ongoing operating budget work, specifically surrounding the Virtual Academy, but also in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm reminded that we're behind schedule. Dr. Daka?
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Mandrowski made me think of a certificate. We give the certificate through the state for bilingualism. There's a possibility that we could have a certificate if they go through the TAM program. And the things you've said today are so wonderful and are innovative, but does our general staff know about it? So then I thought of Dr. Dawson's letter or news sheet that she sends out with her staff to talk about what their activities are. Maybe that would be a good thing just to let people know that you have recruiters, that you have all these career opportunities, that they can get mentors, they can figure out how to do their resumes, that kind of thing. I think it would be important. And the last thing I wanted to say is that we have a very close relationship with Bowie. It's dear to our heart because we've had programs with them before, but I know this new program is really much better and much more organized. Delegate Proctor was the father of one of our employees. She's probably going to kill me. Stephanie's father, Stephanie Williams, he had a building name for him at Bowie. So there's some really very strong ties that we have with Bowie. And I'm glad to see that you're working with them.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, just a quick question. Looking at your pathways to the trades that you highlighted here and you're looking at, I'm assuming, our CTE students and bringing them back with the career pathway. You're listing automotive technician, general maintenance, and IT systems. Are we, are we looking to grow that? Because I could talk all day about the CTE programs at Edison from my teaching there. And I see every single area of work done in that school is developing professionals that we could use from plumbing, plumbers and electricians and HVAC technicians and carpenters and, you know, building a pipeline from our Academy of Health Profession students to partner with DHHS so they can be our next-generation school nurses and school health techs. I spent a day with editorial graphics and publishing group last week. Computerated graphic arts and design would be a perfect mesh for that, you know, that pipeline of employees. So are we looking to increase these pathways to the trade-specific programs?
Sure. So the career, so the pathway to the trade is for employees, current employees. So what it does is it mirrors what you're doing for students now. So what we're looking to do is help employees who currently have these skills that are learned-- learned through experiences in their lives, you know, from their grandfather as an autotech or teaching themselves computers. It's, but they don't have the experience on their resume. So this opportunity, the pathway to the trades, gives them the experience they need to compete for those positions that are in MCPS.
Missed opportunity if we're not going to get those students at Edison and Seneca Valley. Are we looking to expand?
So I would say that, you know, as Natalie describes that career pathways piece specific to our employees, the Grow Your Own piece, as we're thinking about our students, is exactly what you're talking about. And it's certainly part of our plan. And I think when we talked last time in November, you also brought it up, which we were excited about. And so we will continue, as I sort of shared, the multi-pronged effort related to Grow Your Own, not just teachers, but thinking about some of those students that you referenced that are in our CTE programs and elsewhere. And then recognizing that when we do hire them, they may end up wanting to be a teacher, at which point the Career Pathways Program might lead them to that route, or it could lead them elsewhere. So I think you see the Grow Your Own with our own students eventually becoming employees, at which point Natalie jumps in and the Career Pathways Program can accelerate them as well.
Because we always need CTE teachers, too.
Ms. Mandrowski.
I'll be really quick. Just coincidentally, last, yesterday afternoon, I had a conversation with someone from the Controller's Office at the state. And, you know, that might be some, an area where you could reach out to talk about having state-provided funding for, you know, scholarships ahead of time. They were definitely interested in the work that we were doing on this. But, and then someone just reminded me that, have you considered doing, have you done any kind of surveys at all, anonymous surveys of like principals, administrators, teachers even, to find out what kind of barriers they might find? You know, I've heard some concerns about the interview process for some of these, for some of the new positions or different positions and, you know, being concerned about applying to different things, just like, you know, anybody. And so I didn't know if we've ever surveyed people or if that's something that you think about doing, just to get some feedback on.
Sure. So I'll highlight just a few pieces related to the teacher side of the house. And so something that we do do is part of a, sort of after new hires are working within the system, we do administer some surveys to get a sense of what was the process like for them and how can we utilize that data to think about process improvements going forward. But also to, I believe it was Ms. Wolf or Ms. Silvestri that was asking about that level of survey data to try to help inform what are some of the reasons that they'd have come to us, right? And so that's something that we're looking to gather additional data on. And so when the team, the Grow Your Own team, met with the Summer Rise folks, we surveyed them and asked specifically what they were looking for in an employer. And so we'll be able to share some of that data as well because I think, again, to everyone's point, we have to get a sense of where people are in terms of what they, what they might be looking for, and that would help inform the recruitment process. But we definitely do some of that new hire data. And then, of course, the other piece that we do is exit survey data. So when folks are separating from MCPS, we have a robust survey that, again, we're working on analyzing some of those patterns and trends because, again, that also provides us insight as to whether or not there are reasons that folks are opting to separate from the school system, as well as exit interviews that are occurring after, so a period of time after they have left, because we recognize that it is often emotional and raw when you're leaving, for whatever reason. But the, and the research supports that doing those interviews approximately six months after someone has left are much more insightful in terms of the data that is provided, so.
Dr. McKnight.
Yes. I just wanted to say, I know we are short on time. There's so many other programs the team could have thought of, and I just wanted to highlight one. The monitors that we hired during the pandemic, they have in some way become a Grow Your Own and which we have benefited from in so many different ways. And that's, that's one of the programs we haven't even touched on this evening. So I just wanted to say that this should be an ongoing conversation because there's so much more to this. I want to thank you, Natalie, Jason, Travis, Dr. Nixon. I mean, the work that you've done around this really is bringing the vision to fruition and in real time, and I just deeply appreciate it for it. And we look forward to coming back and continuing to share the data that we collect on all of these programs and the success of it with you as a regular update.
I, too, want to thank you for sharing with us today and remind you that these opportunities need to be available to all of our students, not just to a select few. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call Ms. Soskin.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm here today to give you a quick legislative update and ask your position on four bills. So the 2,000 bills, a little over 2,000 bills, 2,172 have dropped so far. They have until the 10th to continue dropping bills. We're tracking 132 of those bills so far. You saw 40 bills in the platform, which are all things that fall clearly under what you've already voted on. So these four bills are just four bills that either didn't fall clearly, or I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to vote on them in public. The first one is a data disaggregation policy. This bill was a local bill. It does now have a House number. It did not have a House number when it came to you initially. This bill really came out of a misunderstanding. When we produce our achievement data, we have it in three different forms. One of those forms is looking at it in focus groups. When we look at it in focus groups, we combine certain focus groups based on trend data. Legislators had a lot of anxiety as they felt that that was the only way that we were sharing data. I have shared with them the link to all of our public data that says it is, that is not the case. They revised the bill, so rather than calling out one specific racial group, it just says all racial groups. So we actually already do this. I spoke with the sponsor of the bill. I said, we can support this bill because we already do this. We disaggregate all of our data, but it's here because I wanted you to understand what the conversation was around it and to know that I did reach out to the sponsor. I did go to the hearing on this bill. I did explain to them. They decided they wanted to codify that we should disaggregate by all racial and ethnic groups, which we already do. So the vote on the, I'm sorry, the recommendation is to support.
But wasn't their point that they wanted us to disaggregate white student data from Asian student data? And we do it, but we don't present it that way.
So that is correct, although they amended the bill to say all racial groups. So the initial bill was because in the focus group data, looking at the equity accountability framework, we had combined white and Asians because the trend data of which groups were performing over time lent to that view. That is only one way we look at the data. That was the way we happened to share with the legislature in their meeting with us, in the board meeting with us. And so although I've shared that we have all of the rest of it, they had some concerns and decided they wanted to codify it.
So how many groups would there be?
There are seven groups that are federally defined, and those are the seven groups that we use. There are three service groups, and we use those three service groups as well.
So it's just the federally defined groups?
Correct.
Because I noticed Delegate Barvez is on here as well, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Again, the recommendation was to support, so I think I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you. The second bill, House Bill 118. This bill came before you because we were requesting an amendment. Whenever I put amendment for, language forward in your name, I always ask you to approve it first. However, I went to the Education Subcommittee last Thursday on this bill, and this bill has also been amended. This bill allows students excused absences for mental health. We've discussed before, the state does not recognize excused versus unexcused. However, the community does. MCPS does allow this. The initial bill had a caveat that said if a student was out for more than three days for a mental health issue, they needed to meet with a mental health professional. That was what we were asking for an amendment for. We don't say a kid has to meet with a doctor. We didn't think that was appropriate. The sponsor has already amended that language out. So the recommendation on this is to now just support. There will not be any amendment language, as he's already made our amendment. So the recommendation is to support.
Is there any discussion?
No. Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, this third bill, House Bill 313. This bill actually requires a vote. I put in a no position because this is specific to the board. This is a recall bill. This bill will allow elected legislators and all elected officials, including board members. So it lists out all of the positions. Board of Education members are one of the positions that are listed, and it would allow for a recall process for any elected official. I have this as no position. This is a, this could be, impact each of you directly. Therefore, it's a, it's a board decision, not a staff recommendation.
Is there any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Ms. Mandrowski.
How, how are they defining the criteria for this?
I mean, just if a group of angry parents get together and say, we want you gone, then you're gone?
No, not exactly. They have to file a petition for recall. A person has to be in office at least 120 days. So there's a number of steps that have to be taken. I can tell you those steps are in line with what it is in other states in any kind of recall. The Board of Election, Board of Education are the last ones on that list. So it's really designed for state legislators, county council, county execs, state delegates, and there's another set of folks, county commissioners, which are different in some counties than from us. Board of Education members are the last ones on that list, but it is a process that would apply to you as well.
So it would have to be put on an election ballot to have you recalled?
There has to be, they have to get a petition, and then they have to go through, and I'm sorry, I don't know the process off the top of my head. It says recall election procedures would have to be established because we don't have them already in our state. The only thing that they're putting in is that there has to be a petition and you have to be in office for more than 120 days. So the exact details would be worked out after the bill is passed.
I don't think that the fact that the Board of Ed is at the bottom is as harmless as you think because we're at the bottom of the ballot, too.
Exactly. Yes.
I did not mean to imply.
And as people are met all the time.
We were not, the intent was not for board members. We were added on. It doesn't matter at the end of the day. It impacts the same.
So you just want to know if the board wants to take a position or not?
Yes. So we need a motion to either remain no position, support, or oppose.
I move to oppose.
Second. Wait, I saw Dr. Javas. Did you want to speak?
No, I think, I think my question got answered.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to oppose. All in favor, raise your hand.
Discussion?
We already had discussion, any discussion, further discussion? No, all in favor, raise your hand. And that is Dr. Daca, Ms. Harris, Ms. Mandrowski, Ms. Silvestri, Ms. Wolf, Ms. Evans, Dr. Jarvis. Jarvis, are you abstaining or are you?
I oppose.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we did, opposed, right? We're opposed. That's, that was, okay, I didn't see your hand, sorry. And Dr. Jav?
No, I, I.
In favor of it?
No, I, no. I'm not in favor of the, of the.
The vote right now is to oppose the bill.
Yes.
Oppose the ability.
I oppose the vote to oppose the bill.
Oh, well, okay, that's, okay.
Or no, right.
Taking note.
No position.
I'll also abstain.
Just to be clear, I'm not abstaining, I'm opposing.
You're opposing?
Yeah.
Okay. You're opposing, okay. Did you get that?
That's five, so that passes, so.
Okay, just so you got it.
The last bill that's on your list is, is very reminiscent of the conversation you just had. And so we do not normally, as a school board, weigh in on gun legislation. It is not part of our platform, so anytime we want to take a position, I'm going to bring these bills before you. This is the bill that was mentioned earlier today that is sponsored by Senator Lee and by Delegate Lopez. This would banish, it essentially would allow every aspect of untraceable guns, which are what we know as ghost guns. It would allow, it would, you couldn't purchase them, you couldn't build them, you couldn't sell them, you couldn't have them, you couldn't anything. The recommendation is to support this bill based on our collective community feeling of what's been happening and the need to get ghost guns out of our schools. So I ask for a motion to support this bill.
I'll definitely move to strongly support it. I had one question in reference to the, but if somebody wants to second first.
Second.
Okay. In terms of the ordering, you know, someone has asked me about whether or not, like how this would be, if they're, if they're going online, essentially, would it be a overall state mandate so, where if you go to purchase, order something online, it would come up as a, sorry, not able to send there?
Yes, Maryland, yes. So similar to the way it currently works, if you, if you buy a gun from another state, you have to go through a dealer, you have to have, you have to go through this whole process, that it would be, there would be something that would come up right away. It happens on alcohol for certain.
I was going to say, like wine.
That says you cannot do this in this state. It would apply the same way. There are certain kinds of guns you can't own. It would apply in the same way.
Perfect, yeah, thank you.
Is there a regional effort to end this? Because 20 minutes from DC, and if I drive down there, I'm just curious as to.
So this is a statewide bill. The regional question is a good answer. I know my friends in Virginia are working on similar legislation. I have not looked at DC's legislation. I'm not sure what they're doing. They tend to, they tend to be similar to us, but I can tell you the other school systems who also do not usually jump in on these are deciding right now with their boards whether to jump in on the gun bills. And after we vote for this.
Definitely support it. I just know that if it's not a regional or a federal thing, I don't know how we control it. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to give you just a couple of quick updates. One is, we also talked about a gun storage bill that was dropped by Delegate Carter yesterday. So that bill will be coming before you at the next board meeting because that will require a vote as well. But I want you to know, we are paying attention to that. That is going to be about proper gun storage. Second, I want to tell you Vaughn Stewart's bill about adding a member to the board did go through the Ways and Means Committee and was at the Education Subcommittee. When he spoke on the bill, they only allowed sponsor testimony, but I wanted to tell you that he said, I'm telling all of you in Ways and Means that the Board of Education is not paid enough and there needs to be a conversation about their compensation, and I'm putting this bill forward as a placeholder, but please know next year we're coming back with another bill. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew that conversation took place in the Ways and Means Committee. And finally, there is a bill out there on student members of the board. That bill is going to be coming, actually, we support that right under our platform, so you will see it when I send you the platform bills. But I wanted to, for the sake of Ms. Looney, let you know, that bill actually will not impact Montgomery County or Anarundel, which are the two counties that have voting rights, but this will give voting rights to the rest of the smog members. And so I wanted you to know that bill is out there, and it is a bill that Hannah may get tasked to talk about because there are only two smogs in the state that have voting rights. And that is it for me.
I just wanted to let Ms. Looney know that I did indicate our support for the bill at yesterday's legislative meeting. As you know, there are 24 districts in this state, and I was the only one in support. Even Anarundel didn't say anything yesterday. The others adamantly oppose it.
I appreciate that, Ms. Wolf. And that's why I brought this up to Ms. Soskin, so we could talk about it today. It's been, there's been a lot of fierce opposition. I've been working with my other student member colleagues where they've been shut down at their board table, nobody wants them to have voting rights. And as one of only two counties in Maryland that has a full voting student member, I think that it would really mean a lot for our Board of Education, as the largest in Maryland, to show our support for this. Not just because I think that this position over 44 years has benefited the work that we do at this board table, but because I think it benefits our larger student body to be exposed to an electoral process at a young age, as young as 12, and keeping an elected official accountable, which they certainly do. They work very hard on that. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that I think it will mean a lot for our board to show support for that bill. Thanks.
And we did, and it's already gone forth as opposed, just so that you understand that part. We tried our best.
On May.
Didn't we?
Yeah, May opposes the bill.
Yes, May is.
May opposes it, but we as a board can still support it.
Oh, you can absolutely do that.
And I will highlight it for you when it comes up in the platform, just so that everybody knows.
Ms. Mandrowski, you have your light on.
Yeah, I had a question.
I was curious as a follow-up, if you have had any conversations or gotten any information in terms of either the county council putting Board of Education's oversight on the.
On the referendum?
Yes, as a referendum to the, to the election ballot.
On that, that is a, I, we can talk about it offline, but it is a conversation that is out there about potentially putting, in case folks don't know.
Issue of ballot.
A referendum specifically about the Board of Education's compensation. You can put it on the ballot. Not, board members can't put it on a ballot, but a county council member can. So there is a conversation about looking for a county council member to sponsor legislation to put that on the ballot. We do not have a sponsor yet. So if anybody is, has a connection or a conversation that they'd like to have about that, please reach out to me.
Okay, thank you. I've talked to a couple of them who've been interested.
At this time, we're going to break for recess. It will be on recess until 4:10. Thank you. Welcome back. At this time, I'm gonna ask Dr., no, actually, I'm gonna ask Ms. Mandrowski. We're up to item number 11, action on board policy, if she wants to get started.
We are, so thank you all for being here. We're here reviewing the proposed revisions to policy FFA in order to clarify and strengthen the process and criteria that we use to evaluate school names. Mrs. O'Neill was especially interested in revisiting this issue and requested that staff take another look at the policy and come back to us with recommendations. The Policy Committee initially reviewed the framework for revising the policy during its May 21, 2021 meeting for background. The committee reviewed the draft policy on December 9 of 2021, and we are asking that we take ten, or being asked to take tentative action on the policy that we have now so that we can send it out for public comment, if all of you are good with, comfortable with that. So that's the background, and with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Mandrowski. Staff from Student Family Support and Engagement prepare to present on this policy. Can we have the slide deck, please? Next slide, please. Mr. Everett will begin the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Turner Percival. Good afternoon to the Board of Ed and also to Dr. McKnight. I'm honored to represent Student Family Support and Engagement around our naming school policy, FFA. In addition to working closely with the Office of General Counsel, I also want to thank our colleagues in School Support and Improvement, as well as the colleagues in SFSC for their collaboration. For context, I wanted to share the purpose of this policy. Simply put, this policy establishes the board's responsibility for naming MCPS schools and facilities and sets forth criteria by which names are evaluated and reconsidered. I'd also like to note that the policy directly aligns with our strategic plan priority number, priority area number two, well-being and family engagement. We have conducted community engagement in drafting this policy, which you will hear more about as we continue with the presentation. Next slide, please. Although the title of this slide is "Issue", there is a positive connotation in that it really is a high honor to have a school named after a person. I recall the honor a fellow church member shared when a school was named after one of his relatives. Not only was it an individual joy and honor, but also a celebration for our community and for the entire family. Additionally, it is important to note that a school or facility naming is a commitment of public resources. This honor should equitably, which is again in alignment with our core value of equity, represent the diversity of our county and is reserved for the ideals, core values, and commitments expressed in board policies, for example, policy ACA, nondiscrimination, equity, and cultural proficiency. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Frost. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon. First, we'll talk about the position and the criteria that's listed in the proposed policy. The proposed policy maintains the position that adopting names for schools and facilities remains as the board's responsibility. Naming a portion of a school or facility is within the superintendent's responsibility, and naming that generate financial gain is prohibited unless expressly approved by the board. We also laid out the criteria for acceptable names for a school or a facility. One item that is new is the first one listed there. The ideals or concepts or curricular objectives may serve as a name for a school. We also laid out that a geographic feature could be a name for a school, and we retained the criteria that a school could be named after a person, emphasizing that the person must have been deceased and made a demonstrated contribution or exemplifies core values of the school system. And we encourage that there's strong consideration for persons who represent the diversity of Montgomery County. The policy also proposes languages for unacceptable names for a school, and that is a new feature in this policy. We also want to emphasize these criteria are also to be considered when somebody petitions to rename a school. So that is a new feature. They must show that the existing name does not align with these criteria. Next slide, please. As we worked on this policy, we also engaged in stakeholder engagement through focus groups. We went out to a few stakeholder groups and also held dedicated small focus groups. These groups included parents of students, representatives from the Montgomery County Historical Society and Montgomery County Planning Department so that we could also have a historical aspect on how other organizations approach naming facilities. We talked about the criteria for the names, criteria for renaming, and the responsibility of naming school facilities. You'll note that the priorities from the focus groups are reflected in the priority, in, in the policy. They mostly agree with the existing name criteria that we went over in the slide before, that school and facility names should reflect the diversity of the county. And there was also conversation around the history of the persons whose schools are named for and their contribution to society and their contributions toward, or the disregard for equitable society. And they confirmed, as in the policy before and is maintained in the policy, that the school community should have input in the school naming selection. So now I'll turn it over to Ms. Sally Davis, and she'll start with the implementation strategies.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. So what is not changed is the board maintains a list, and the community is welcome to add suggestions to that list at any time. What we have clarified a little bit on, at the bottom of page four is that the board will receive a regular review of the names for alignment with naming criteria and relevant board policy as to keep current with emerging historical research. Next slide, please. Oh, next slide, please. The naming school process, for example, for a new school, is not largely changed. You see, it would start with board action to select from the list of names, four, four names for consideration. There would be a community engagement process, and the community would be invited to add two additional names and then create a prioritized list. The board would receive the board, the community's list and a summary of engagement activities conducted, and then it would be the board's decision to choose from that list. Just some, some upgrades to that, and I will note a related project that the Policy Management Committee is involved in is their work on policy ABA, community involvement. There has been a substantial amount of work done on that so that it is a more robust community engagement process using some of the tools available that have been developed by, by the school system. So that is referenced as the process that would be called upon for doing this community engagement. Next slide, please. The process of renaming. The existing policy names, or says that there will, there can be a petition at any time. So this process has just been developed a little bit further, that a petition can come from, from the community, that we have added some language that says that the receipt of a petition does not automatically mean that a school would be renamed. But what we have laid out is a first stage to the process where the petition is received, it is reviewed for adequacy. Does it, does it contain the required elements? There's a board decision to conduct the engagement. If that goes forward, there would be a community engagement process to inform the community that a petition has been received, and then to seek input on the meaning of the name for the current school community. At the end of that, there would be more robust information than just a petition provided to the board for their deliberation that would give a more broadly developed sense of where the community stands on the name. And then it would be the board's decision to name or rename. At that point, assuming the board, but if the board decides to move forward with selecting a new name, the cycle you saw in the previous slide would commence, and there would be the process of four names chosen by the board, two nominated by the community, community engagement, a prioritized list, and then the board could choose from that list. So that is the two-step process we have laid out. Next slide, please. So going forward, depending on your discussion and deliberation today, there would be a proposed public comment period during the end of February and March. And April 21, review of the public comments by the Policy Management Committee. And assuming these deadlines are met, it's possible that the policy could move for final action by the full board on May 26. So that concludes our presentation. We are prepared for your discussion and questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mandrowski.
I was just going to see, say thank you for all of the work that you did on this. The Policy Management Committee is very appreciative, and does anybody have any questions or comments? Well, then, in that, oops, sorry, nevermind.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the petition to rename. So any school community can, can you just touch on that again? So one person can make a petition? And what's the board approval or denial process before it moves forward?
Right, so, page seven, so there. Page seven, so there are some required elements. So a petition must include some analysis that demonstrates that the name does not meet the criteria, or that it otherwise demonstrates a reason to change the name in a manner to align with the categories and criteria in the policy. And it should show demonstrated support.
Demonstrated support.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, it is, it's on, on page seven, so if you want to look at it there. Well, since it's coming out of committee, it does not need a second, but I will read the resolves so that we can take a vote on whether or not to move it to public comment. And that's resolved that the Board of Education take tentative action on the committee recommended draft board policy FFA, naming school facilities, and be it further resolved that the draft board policy FFA, naming school facilities, be sent out for public comment. All in favor?
All in favor, raise your hand. Dr. Daka? And that is unanimous, thank you.
So thank you all very much, we appreciate your, your work.
You.
I did want to say thank you, too. It's so straightforward. We get so many comments from the public who are confused about how our renaming process works, so this should help. So thank you.
Hope you put it on Twitter as soon as possible because there are communities that are asking about it, a couple of them. Okay, we're up to item number 12. I'm gonna ask Dr. McKnight to proceed.
Hey, thank you so much, President Wolf. So at this time, we are going to begin by sharing some brief updates related to MCPS operations. Please bring up the slide presentation. To begin operations, we're going to share some general information around COVID-19 response, including updates on transportation and human resources. We're also going to provide some work that we've been doing around well-being, safety, and security. I mentioned that earlier today. We've had a number of groups that have gotten together and collaborated over the past few weeks, groups who've been meeting since the beginning of the year to address a number of the issues that we have seen impacting our schools since they've come, students have returned in person this year. We are committed to ensuring a safe and equitable environment in all 209 of our schools, and I want to just reiterate that social emotional wellness is a key component of that, and so I look forward to us getting to that discussion. As they, as we get into that discussion today, I also want to say that I want to thank the board for including an additional meeting on this Thursday, where we will have an opportunity to follow up and have more discussion and hear from community stakeholders around their questions, concerns, and feedback regarding our students' well-being, safety, and security in MCPS. You're also going to hear information about the work we've done with many various stakeholders in our communities, including the Montgomery County Police Department, to evaluate the Community Engagement Officer Program. That was something we committed to at the very beginning of the program when we implemented it this year, and we want to make sure we're coming back and sharing with you the data that we have and what updates we need to share with you based on adjustments that we work with them on making in that program. So with that said, I won't hold this up any further, and I will turn it over to Ms. Heather Dublinsky.
Thank you, Superintendent McKnight. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm excited to share with you today some positive COVID-19 updates related to case rates in MCPS and an update on MCPS COVID case investigation previously referred to as contact tracing. Next slide, please. Next slide again, please. As you can see reflected in the chart on this slide, the beginning of January was very difficult as we returned from winter break and saw a significant surge in COVID-19 cases due to the Omicron variant. We saw a high of 2,833 cases reported in a single day on January 5, and a low of 37 cases towards the end of the month on January 29. You'll see lower points mid-month, and these reflect days where there was inclement weather or there were weekends when lower test utilization was occurring. And those are typically times where people don't actively seek out testing as frequently. I am happy to report that our positive COVID cases continue to decline as we hopefully round the corner from the Omicron variant. Next slide, please. Although the positive cases within this system continue to drop, we remain prepared to support schools with the work required when there is a positive case on site. Thanks to the advocacy of Dr. McKnight and ongoing collaboration with the Department of Health and Human Services, we have increased the number of case investigators available to support COVID-19 cases. Case investigation and the many time-consuming pieces that go along with the process is no longer the primary responsibility of principals and school administrators. DHHS contractors that have been supporting schools with doing rapid tests in our triage rooms have been trained on COVID case investigation processes. With the addition of the DHHS contractors and the existing MCPS employees, over 120 case investigators will be available to perform COVID-19 follow-up, allowing school administrators to focus on the important work of their students and staff. I will now turn it over to Dr. Dawson to share about COVID-19 testing.
Thank you, next slide, please. So as we continue our collaborative partnership with the HHS, you can see that we have 50,000 rapid test kits that are coming in each week. The iHealth Kits as a mitigating measure to continue our battle against COVID. We continue to distribute every three weeks through March to all students and staff, which would be roughly over 190, close to 190,000. Students and staff will be asked to report positive results through MCPS COVID-19 reporting tool. As well, as we continue asymptomatic testing in all schools as another COVID-19 mitigating measure through our vendor Cyion, we'd like to also address a recent issue that occurred at the end of last week, which we became aware of, Welcome to Cleared4, a message that was mistakenly sent out to all MCPS individuals who consented to asymptomatic COVID testing with Cyion. These messages from Cyion were unfortunate and unnecessary. On Friday, Cyion did release a statement to speak to that, and our desire is always to be as communicative to the importance of testing for COVID-19 and make sure that our school testing is managed by this vendor in a way that we are not creating issues. We're glad they reached out to parents to clarify that mistake, and Cyion Diagnostics used Cleared4 work to, as an application management reporting of the test results for COVID-19. It's a highly secure and HIPAA compliant site. The messages for Cleared4 initiated by Cyion Diagnostics were not spam, and there was no breach of data. This is not phishing email. This is not phishing email. It was only intended to go out to our newly consenting individuals. We have worked with iAm to ensure that this will not happen again, and they've assured MCPS of this because they've adjusted their welcome message. The future welcome messages to MCPS parents will outline steps to access their students' test results using a multi-factor authentication with Cleared4 work. Next slide, please. And I turn this next section to transportation updates. And as my colleague Heather had some good news, we do as well. We did have 11 school days that did have interrupted bus routes. Since January 21st, we are 12 days at 100% and continue to recruit and hire additional bus drivers through our training program and our other outreach. So we are glad to be in this, this spot for our students. So thank you. Next slide, and I turn the presentation over to Dr. Nixon.
Thank you. So this is the final slide for this section. This illustrates for us where we've been from January 5th through the 31st in terms of filled positions for substitutes and unfilled positions, in terms of assignments taken for the day. Just want to clarify that. And as we can see, there has been a steady decline, and I'm very happy to report that in this very short month of February, the decline has continued and our fill rate has climbed to over 60%. So that is really good news on the horizon for us as well. And as Mr. Weeby shared a little while ago, that we do have our cohort program up and running, and so we are able to use the substitute teachers that we have designated for some of those hard-to-fill schools, and the schools have been identified. So that's, that's a very positive step in the right direction there. And as we continue to see these numbers decline and the fill rate climb as well, so the decline of the unfilled and the climb of the fill rate is really what we're after here. And we continue to recruit and continue to have the bimonthly job fairs. So those are all positive steps in the right direction to reinforce the substitute pool that we have. And again, with the work through labor relations and MCA and adjusting the pay rates, all of those things have contributed, I believe, to helping alleviate some of this stress around substitute teachers. So the trend is looking good for us, and our numbers are getting back to what a normal day would be for a school of our size. So we will continue to keep you posted on, on the sub-data. And that is the final slide for this section.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Looney?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Thank you so much for the update. First is surrounding the COVID-19 reporting tool. Is that just referencing the Google form that's found on the front page of every website, English, Spanish? Okay. Is there a way that we can get that available in more languages? I know one really great example of a form that I think was well-done was our opt-in testing form, where the form was available in like 10 different languages. The first question was, which language would you like to take the survey in? We have a really diverse community, and I'd hate to have that form be inaccessible to more people.
Thank you, Ms. Looney. We'll take that feedback as we're looking to enhance and revise the form and provide you with an update.
Great. And another, I guess either if there's an update on it that can be shared now or just something to think about is how we incentivize regular testing and reporting, right? Because just sending those test kits home, I know a lot of my peers, classmates, people I've spoken to didn't take them, or if they did take them, they didn't report their result. And I know originally with the first round of distribution of testing, our sort of incentive was if you want to participate in extracurriculars, we have to have a negative result from you. But I guess we can't really do that moving forward, or is that something we're considering? How do we incentivize reporting?
With the new distribution that went out, we sent recommendations of when the test should be used because we really wanted them to be available to families when they need them, whether their student has been exposed, whether a student or staff member is symptomatic and needs quick access to the test. We'd like them to hold on to a kit once we do another distribution for after spring break before they return. So we gave recommendations of when the test should be applied so that they are used in a strategic way.
Oh, so this is different from the first shipment or first distribution where we asked students to take it regardless of how they were feeling? Okay, understood. Thank you.
Ms. Looney, may I follow up on one thing that you said earlier about the, the actual reporting form?
Yes.
We've had an opportunity to gain some feedback from our advisory team, our COVID-19 advisory team, just about the form. And one of the, the key things that we've seen, I think, with this pandemic is things change, needs change, and how we need to do things. And so we did get some input around the form. We are working with our technology office as well as other partners to be able to do some revisions and to release a form that is more for the time of where we are now. So within the next couple of weeks, we will do that, definitely taking into account some things that will make it more user-friendly, make it more accessible to families and kids, as well as to make it seamless in terms of the information that we're receiving and how it's catalogued as well.
That would be great. I appreciate that. And just because this is such a different task usage of our tests from the first round of distribution, I just want to make sure or emphasize the need for that to be really clear in communication, right? Because the first round of distribution, we really emphasized that everybody needed to take those tests regardless of their circumstances, and now it's, the communication is different.
So we have sent the principals a letter to distribute with the test, to send home to, with students with the test, and that's translated into multiple languages and gives those recommendations of when to use the test as well.
Great, thank you. I had a question about busing as well. Having no unserved bus route since January 21st is a really, really great thing to hear. I have been hearing from a lot of students, though, that because of our lack of bus drivers, there's been a lot of condensed bus routes, right? So bus rides that were 15 minutes before are now 30 minutes or an hour. Where are our staffing numbers right now, like where they are in comparison to where they need to be for every route to be completely staffed without needing to be condensed together?
Thank you for that question. We are still about 100 drivers short. We average approximately 100 to 105, down to 95. Just before December, before we left, we had actually gotten down to about 84. And we were able to put, as opposed to double backing, we were able to, to just stop some of that in some of the routes. But right now, until we move forward, and that's our long-term plan, to really be able to reduce those numbers to get that back, because we are still doing some of those double routes. And that's where we have, that takes a little bit longer to do those.
Got it. Thank you.
Ms. Sylvester.
Rapid-fire questions or rapid-fire answers? You said we are close to a 60% fill rate for subs. What is our normal percentage?
We're closer to 70, 75%.
Okay. And my other question is, we have case investigation, more than 120 MCPS and DHHS case investigators. Are those fully hired?
Yes, those are fully hired. We're working on getting them trained and onboarded and giving them access to the resources they need, but those DHHS contractors have already been working in our schools, supporting with rapid testing in the triage rooms.
Thank you.
Ms. Mandrowski.
Yep, very quick questions as well. I'm so happy to hear that we have gotten all of our routes back or that no schools have, but I do know that, and also along with Ms. Looney's comments about longer routes, that more kids are, I think we've also compounded some of the routes. I'm wondering how we're communicating to families. I've heard from some people who, like, they would have driven their kids to school if they had known that we were going to be putting routes together, for example, or however it is that we're addressing it until we can hire enough bus drivers, but.
Thank you for that. So the schools actually have helped us with some of this in terms of the supervisors from, the bus route supervisors are calling to let schools know if a bus is running extremely late. So if a route is already about 15 to 20, maybe 30 minutes late, they, they would be notified of that. However, you know, when we are double-backing routes, those routes will be late, and that is part of, of what is communicated upfront about that route. But if we are, if we're running late in a school, we do notify, and that is something that we've really tried to, to do upfront as much as possible. So it's really trying to reduce the, the double-backing as much as we can.
No, and I appreciate that. I, timeliness is, is critical, but also crowdedness. Like I was saying, you know, there are some people who would put together car pools and take bunches of kids if they were aware that they're, they might need extra space on the bus. So just trying to make sure that we maintain communication with our families on those type of things. And then my last question is, where are we with extracurricular activities, sports, after-school activities, whatever it might be, in terms of medical or religious exemptions? Are we doing that? Or is that, are people able to apply for things like that or no?
If, in terms of employees who want to apply for a religious or a medical exemption, they would do that through our ADA office? That's for our employees. I think for students, I'm not 100% certain. In terms of athletics or after-school activity?
I can chime in on the student piece. So right now, there's the vaccination requirement for athletics. For winter sports, the requirement was that all student athletes be vaccinated or have a medical exemption. We're currently in the process of reviewing whether to expand that to a religious exemption for spring sports. As it stands right now, it's still required vaccination or medical exemption.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of quick questions about our screening testing in schools. How are we with the number of students that have opted in to the screening testing?
So currently, we have about 72,000 students, or 44.3% have consented to screening. And we are, you know, working with the schools still to make sure that we're trying to get the, the numbers of students to show up for those screenings as they come in for asymptomatic, yes.
Okay, and are we also looking at whether those are schools that have lower uptake and with, with more focused messaging?
Yes. So I know that we've worked with communications that has, you know, done a push-out to, only to people that have not, you know, had a consent form. So that's been a push, and we've gotten more from that. That's been very helpful. And then working with the schools themselves, if we need, if we see that we have a concentration, we've actually tried to move some more testing there to support that so that we have more testing done.
And how are we doing with their capacity? So we had, iAm is our contractor in the fall. We've added June 2020 now. So the goal originally was to be able, with the expansion with the second additional contractor, to be able to be, to do screening testing in schools more than once a week? And then that way increase the, the rotation of, of students who were being tested? Have we been able to do that?
Well, we haven't gotten to doing schools more than once a week yet. What we have done is be able to center more teams at a school at that time to be able to provide extra support or extra testing at that time. We have, when we did have several schools out on virtual learning, we took, we did take those teams and move them to other schools to provide extra support and testing. So that was helpful.
And are we, are we at a place where we're convinced, and maybe this goes to Mr. Dandrea, keeping the dashboard up to date regularly with the, we're emphasizing the need for folks to report? So are we able now to keep that dashboard pretty current?
So I can start, and others may want to chime in, but yes, so there is data that's being posted every single day showing the number of student and staff cases in all of our 209 school sites. And there's ongoing work in collaboration with COAT and the Office of Technology and Innovation to be able to upgrade what's available on the dashboard and provide more comprehensive information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Definitely.
Thank you. Ms. Looney?
Yeah, while we're on the topic of opting into COVID-19 testing, I've said this before, but just to reiterate, I really think we would benefit from doing direct outreach to students, especially at the secondary level, where I know we're lacking more than at the elementary level in opt-in forms. If students understand the importance of why they need to say yes to the test, I think they'll be able to convince their parents, especially for our students whose parents may not speak English. So would really appreciate direct emails, letters sent home, just direct communication with our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we can continue.
Okay, we'll have the team transition up front to begin the discussion on MCPS's Comprehensive Well-Being, Safety, and Security Initiative. We have MCPS staff with us, Ms. Rubin and Mr. Montiloni, and we thank you. Assistant Chief Carmen Faccioli from our Montgomery County Police Department, who's joining us here today again. You've been a couple of regular at our board meetings. We thank you for making the time.
Thank you, and congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, I'll turn it over to you at this time, Ms. Rubin.
Yes, good afternoon, if we can get the slideshow. Good afternoon, President Wolf, Vice President Sylvester, members of the board, and Dr. McKnight. We are here to present today on MCPS's Comprehensive Well-Being, Safety, and Security Initiative. This is extremely important and certainly timely, given all that we heard in this morning's public forum, but all that we've been doing for the last two years in reference to addressing this. I'll take the next slide, please. Just to serve as a reminder, we came before the board a few weeks ago and really spoke about the continuing. And every time that we come around this issue, we're going to really be talking about well-being, school culture, equity, and then safety, and how all of those things come together and coalesce as we think about what we need to do for our schools. And so when we say that this is a strategic response, we are responding to what our Surgeon General has classified as a youth mental health crisis in our nation. We're responding to the increased physical, emotional, and psychological issues that have arisen as a result of the continuing human health crisis and the needs that present themselves in our schools, not only with our students, but for our staff members, and certainly within our community and our families. I'll take the next slide. And so just to talk a little bit about the vision, if you see, we are really talking about a comprehensive, shared vision between Montgomery County Public Schools, our partners in the Montgomery County Police Department, as well as our partners in the Department of Health and Human Services. And it has to be a shared vision. We need the same language. We need to all agree that we share the same beliefs about the why this work is important. We need to have the same practices and understand what those practices are, how we implement, how we measure, and how we evaluate. And all of these things, when we can do them in a sustainable way, will lead us to those safe and equitable schools that we're looking to have and maintain here in Montgomery County Public Schools. Next slide. So our work together. Our work together really has an overarching vision of, as I've said, well-being. And so as we've worked together diligently, there are a few things that rose to the top. Key and foremost, how do we enhance our structures and processes? Those are things that we need to address immediately and take a look at. Our work has to be iterative. It has to be ongoing. We have to use it much like we do our school improvement process planning. Where a school has a plan, it's not supposed to be tucked into a drawer or shelved somewhere. It is a continuous process where the school is looking at the data, that can be perceptual data, voice data, the actual quantitative metrics of student achievement, and really looking to see what's working that we've put in place, what isn't working, and if it isn't working, what do we need to do to change those circumstances? And that will be our approach with this work as well. And then finally, how do we develop those proactive practices to support and sustain equitable school environments here in Montgomery County Public Schools? What are the things that we're doing ahead of time? What are the things that we're doing ahead of time to anticipate the need and respond to it in a timely fashion? Next slide. And so there are some key questions that we wanted to share because these questions will help to ground the work as we present it both to you here and as we continue to explain and, and work with our community partners, our school-based staff, our central services staff, our community, around why this work is important and why we've come to this particular vision as to how we move forward. And so first and foremost, what are we doing to create the circumstances for equitable schools through an anti-racist lens? What does equity look like in our collaborative work with our law enforcement partners? And we've had some significant conversations, key of which was Friday, when we had the opportunity as agencies to really spend an entire day together, looking at this work, having some of our Montgomery County students zoom in and talk about their fears, talk about the things that they want to see happen with this plan, and having us then ask questions to them and then use that to influence and drive the way that we're creating the plan. What does it look like for the whole child? Academic, physical, social, psychological? And then what is the impact? That impact is mutual. We have to be looking at the impact here in Montgomery County Public Schools, and also what does it mean for our law enforcement partners and how are we working to improve those processes? Next slide. And so equity at the forefront. I know we've used this word quite a bit in Montgomery County Public Schools, and I believe because of the nature of the work, it is important. So before I go through the equity impact questions for us, I'd like to ground and frame it in some, some level of personal experience, I think, for many families of color. I want to acknowledge that in the work with R-SW and SWAG, what I heard repeatedly from families of color, students of color, there's a great deal of pain in the community, pain that is rooted in experience, either personal or family members. And for those that are not of color, that are allies, and I've heard a great deal specifically to our student voice, which has been lifted up in this work, many of the students, people will say, haven't really experienced these things. These aren't their experiences. But we've taught our students to lift their voice and allyship. We've taught our students that to be good citizens, they cannot only be concerned with the things that impact their lives, but the things that impact us as a society. And so when we see our students doing that, we have to acknowledge that, and we have to praise that. And so part of that is part of the pendulum. The other part comes in, those conversations that happen, that pain that exists within families of color. The other side of that spectrum has to be what I can anticipate, what happens in the homes of those of our law enforcement partners, the fear and the anxiety their families feel when they leave home every day. Each of us wants to come home every day to our families. For some of us, depending on what we do, that likelihood doesn't look the same percentage-wise. And that abyss, that is the gap that we have to close. And so when we come before you as a united front today, it is to say that we are prepared and ready to engage in that meaningful way on behalf of our students. And for us, that is what equity looks like. So when we say for whom does this practice or decision serve or neglect, or whose voices are dominating or lacking from the conversation, those are the things that we're talking about. Next slide. And our final questions, what steps are in place for ongoing data collection and reflection of the outcomes? I think this is going to be key and seminal in our work. We must consistently manage the data, look at it, and when it is not reflective of our vision, make the changes that are necessary to ensure that that doesn't happen. And then finally, how diverse are the stakeholders leading the implementation? Significantly important, and I do want to state that for our students, they want to be felt, they want to feel seen in any of the work that we do. They want to be able to present as their full selves when they enter into our school buildings, and they really want that opportunity to be able to live their lives in a meaningful way and have choice. And so that really undergirds a great deal of our work, and especially when we say keeping equity at the forefront, that is what we're talking about. Next slide. And so our stakeholder engagement, you heard me reference this briefly, broad-based and wide, and it hasn't ended. I heard a, a parent present earlier that I would love to have her voice in what we're going to call the Community Engagement Panel. We need different voices. We need different people speaking about their perspective so that it helps us to get better. But we have worked extensively with our principals at the high school, middle, and elementary level. We had a forum last week that we're continuing, and I do want to give a big, big shout out to all of the specialists in OTLS, who really helped us to pull that together, about 230 of our students across our middle and high schools participating. And I did hear some things that were absolutely heart-wrenching, and then I heard things that were just soaring and inspiring. We've had our R-SW, as well as our SWAG group, as I've mentioned before. There are members of MACAP, MCA, SCIU, HHS, and a variety of community partners that are reflected on those groups. And those groups have been in existence for approximately, a little bit over seven months, I believe, or more, doing some of that work. And so we have engaged across the board, and as I mentioned, will continue to do so throughout this process. Next slide. So now we're going to talk about what grounds our work, which is the mental, psychological, and social and emotional services of the initiative that we're putting forward. And I will now toss it to Mr. Montaloni to lead us through that portion.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin, and greetings to the Board of Education, Dr. McKnight. I'm Damon Montaloni, Assistant Chief of Teaching Learning in Schools. As Ms. Rubin stated earlier, this work is indeed holistic, and we know that the foundation of safe and equitable schools rests on the wellbeing of our students. And we know that we've, as we emerge from two years of operational and public health challenges, we know the path to successfully mitigating students' learning disruptions is forged upon the road of strong social, emotional wellbeing. If you don't have that at the foundation, it's very difficult to build the other pieces on top of it. And so to this end, the success of everything that you're going to hear today is predicated upon our ability to deal with the mental health crisis that we are facing as a result of the pandemic. Next slide, please. So you're going to hear today about some recommended additional support structures. And to address these mounting social and emotional challenges that we're facing, we must look beyond some of the traditional infrastructure that we have in place. And we need to bring to scale some of the creative and innovative practices that have proven to be effective and that are occurring in our schools across the district today. Some of these include ensuring wellness rooms or wellness spaces are available to every student and staff member across the district, enhancing the capacity of our student wellbeing teams, ensuring that each and every one of our students has time in their daily schedule for social, emotional wellness. This cannot be left to chance any longer. Scaling up peer support groups at the secondary level, and enhancing our ability to serve more and more students within our tiered continuum of support. In addition to these internal initiatives, we look forward to engaging with conversations with our partners, the Department of Health and Human Services, as we strongly advocate for bringing a wellness center to each and every one of our high schools. And a theme that you will hear throughout this presentation is that while each of these practices, practices are happening in some way within our schools, we've got to act now to ensure that they are happening to scale and with fidelity for each and every one of our students. And so this is going to mean true collaboration with all of our stakeholders internally and externally. It's going to mean real innovation. It's going to mean funding allocations and meaningful staffing to be essential for our success. Next slide, please. So as we dig deeper into some of these, these proven practices, let's begin with wellness rooms or wellness spaces. As we know, and has been clearly documented, as more and more of our students face challenges socially, emotionally, wellness rooms are providing today in MCPS students with an option to disrupt any spiraling thought patterns, right, they may be having in class or in our schools, and be able to deal with these in a supportive environment. This practice of wellness spaces and wellness rooms is occurring across more and more of our middle schools. I want to applaud our middle school leaders, who have really taken the initiative in moving this practice forward. These wellness rooms are critical for, for de-escalation practices and allow students to deal with some of the emotions before perhaps making choices that lead to bad outcomes. They serve as a key proactive step in reducing stress, anxiety, and decreasing traditional disciplinary action. And wellness rooms also serve as a vehicle for young people to learn about internal coping and modulation skills. And further, everything that you will see here today under our wellbeing plan serves as a way for us to identify students who heretofore may have fallen through the cracks and link them to the resources that they need. So it should be noted as well that our partners in the R-SW Mental Health Subcommittee have recommended the creation of a comprehensive and integrated crisis decision-making tree, right? So that it provides different avenues for us to respond to students' varying needs. This space is an example of an outlet on that tree for which we can provide students support. Moving on to the student wellbeing teams. Student wellbeing teams have been around since the beginning of the pandemic, March of 2020, as you may recall. And at their inception, they were designed for us to be able to reach those students who we, who we weren't able to contact with, reach contact with, in order to bring them into our virtual learning spaces. These have evolved over time and currently perform a variety of functions, including identifying students who may be at risk, supporting students in crisis, performing wellness check-ins, and connecting students with additional resources. We need to enhance these teams' ability to serve all students and possibly serve as learning centers or trainer of trainer centers for de-escalation. De-escalation practices are practices that some of our staff are highly trained in, mostly administrators, security team members, social workers, and those staff members in our SES programs. This is a skill that we believe more and more of our educators need, to be able to react in real time to the needs of our students and de-escalate situations before they reach a point of no return. We must also recognize that the teachers and counselors who serve in these roles on our wellness teams are doing so beyond their defined duties. We have heard about the burdens that our, our teachers and our support staff have felt throughout this year. So it's imperative that we honor this work and investigate providing stipends and other incentives. We must be mindful of their increasing responsibilities. Next slide, please. So here's some data from the beginning, beginning of the year-to-date that breaks down, really a variety of data, but certainly the students who have accessed our wellbeing teams and the reasons for their referrals. So what you can see is, close to 80% of the referrals were around social, emotional concerns and attendance or engagement. And as I would like to think, and from my experience, the former is often a cause of the latter. Additionally, as evidenced by this data, there is a disproportion, disproportionality around which of our students are engaging with wellbeing teams. So clearly, this is urgent work, and students are accessing these resources. And it's our desire to enhance these teams in a meaningful way, especially as we look to the additional wellness staff we expect in our schools in FY '23. Next slide, please. Time for daily social, emotional wellness. So it's very, very important that we ensure that each and every student has time for wellness built into their schedule as a central component of the work that we are about to begin. As I've said, wellbeing can no longer be seen as an ancillary activity in our schools. Indeed, is a primary building block for safe and equitable schools and needs to be part of our daily routine and culture. Time built into the schedule for social, emotional wellness would go a long way in providing students a space for healthy communication of their anxiety, their stress, for learning those coping skills, and to build community amongst each other. We know that advisory periods currently serve as a platform for these spaces, and that all of our middle schools have that space in their schedules every single day. At the high school level, daily wellness time is more varied. Many high schools, if not all of them, have began advisory periods. We need to really take, take a look at the advisory period, see how that we can build into possibly this space as we think about wellness time built into the high school schedule. We know that this, bringing this to scale is going to require a lot of collaboration with our stakeholders at our secondary schools and possibly with our association partners, but it is important for us to have this conversation. As we look to peer support groups, this is another proven and well-researched program that we have in probably most of our high schools. But again, it's highly variable as to which high schools have programs that serve a variety of students that are meeting their needs and those that do not. And so this is another opportunity for us to see where best practices are occurring, dig into that research across the country, and be able to figure out ways to ensure that these are occurring. Again, we need to consider the, the burdens that some of our staff are facing and consider how we are, we're going to bring this to scale, as many of our counselors are leading this work. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, MCPS has long had a tiered continuum of support. And this continuum of support is a way for students to enter into our mental health and social, emotional wellbeing support system. But as we see more and more students accessing these interventions, and as we see increasingly intensive challenges, it's incumbent upon us to enhance these supports and provide the resources and staffing necessary to continue to implement this with fidelity. We simply at this time are seeing a higher demand than we are able to serve through our tiered continuum. Thank you very much. I will now kick it back to Ms. Rubin.
All righty. Thank you. Next slide, please. And so as you can see, we are grounding much of our work in continuing some of the innovative practices we began in MCPS, but also extending them as a component of the wellbeing, safety and security. At this juncture, we will get a little bit deeper into the security and safety components, and specifically talk to you about our thinking as it pertains to enhancement of the current Community Engagement Officer Program. Next slide. So when we consider the landscape, and we would be remiss if we did not say that as a result of many of the social, emotional challenges that many of our students are facing, we have seen heightened serious incidents in our districts as well that can be accounted through our previous presentation to the Board, and you'll see some reminder data from us here as well. And so with that in mind, with all of the voice data that we've gathered, there is an overarching need to revisit our current MCPD CEO program that we have and take a look at what the staffing structures and processes that are in place and how we can further enhance those to the benefit of wellbeing for all of our students. Next slide. And so in our collaboration with MCPS and MCPD, we have a shared, we have a few shared areas of focus, and they are important. And I, I want to make note that these are extremely different from how we've approached the work in the past. So key to our work together will be grounding our work in relationship building, wellness, and community engagement. Engaging in shared learning that goes both ways, us learning in MCPS and our partners in MCPD, having shared goals and outcomes for what we would like to achieve, and taking a look at what is the standard operation and procedure for how we engage with our students, how we engage in our school buildings, and how we engage across the board in Montgomery County Public Schools. The next slide, please. And so there are a couple of key things that I'll call out here that are important to note. First and foremost, we are looking for an increased partnership and relationship building between our two agencies. MCPS has asked to be able to contribute or participate in the CEO selection process. That is something that is, that will be ongoing between us, and she Facciolo can speak in detail to that later. We are also looking for CEOs to participate in school initiatives, as we have outlined in our MOU and the current addendum that will be added to our MOU. For example, participating in Dare and Great Assemblies at schools, participating in Career Days, study circles or restorative circles, and staff and student extracurricular activities. Next is our annual agency, our annual collective agency engagement. We will be instituting a process where district commanders and Montgomery County Public School staff will collaborate to engage all of our school leaders at levels to discuss school and community initiatives or concerns. We're looking for that to be a monthly meeting time, looking to also... We're looking for that to be a monthly meeting time, looking to also include that in our summer planning and programming when many of our district leaders, that is a time that they're there and they're planning for the next year. So looking to institutionalize that in our work. One interest that we have in MCPS that we've discussed, and it will take further conversation and deliberation on the part of our partners in MCPD, is to consider the actual plainclothes detective-style approach to uniform for our CEOs. We feel that this may help MCPD to maintain their essential gear, but also makes them another trusted adult and member of our school community and for them to be seen in that way. The next slide, please. And this is a significant add and improvement to our work, shared learning and goals. So we are looking to have inter-agency, shared summer learning, and community building. We started this about a week ago where we brought together all of our CEOs, MCPD leadership as well as MCPS leadership, and we had the opportunity to meet in a meeting. And I can't tell you, there was just a different vibe after that meeting. People had the opportunity to get into groups and speak with each other about what their experiences have been and what they would like to see happen. And we've been able to use that, to infuse that in much of what you're seeing today. So we're looking to ensure those shared, common understanding of the alignment of our work and our roles. And I will take this opportunity to call out something. I think in our previous iteration, there was some blurring of the lines, and I will say perhaps on both ends, but I can only speak for Montgomery County Public Schools. Discipline rests with us in MCPS, and that has to continue to be what we are saying is a non-negotiable as we engage in this work. So finally, to establish some guidelines for ensuring that the program works with fidelity and to invest in our professional learning. On the right-hand side of the screen, you see the courses that we've agreed will help to enhance our work if we're both learning from each other and taking these courses so that we understand what is best, what is in the best interest of our students. And I just point out, too, de-escalation strategies. We've got to get that to all of our teachers and administrators, and we have got to be side by side with Montgomery County Police Department around these. Key, key to our work. Next slide. And so as we think about our standard operations, when we think about a cluster model for our CEOs, and then you'll see we're seeing their law enforcement engagement officers, because in some cases, if a CEO is not able to be at a particular school site, another officer will be deployed, and we just wanted to make sure we were clear about that. And really, we're looking at a cluster-wide model. We're talking about relationship, learning, and well-being. And so having our elementary principals, our middle school principals, and our high school principals able to have that access, so our structure will look differently, and we're excited about looking at that. So on a particular day, the CEO may be at the elementary school, helping to welcome the students off of the bus and making sure that that process goes smoothly. They might be at a middle school town hall or assembly, doing a component of that meeting. But really looking to build the culture of trusted adult and partnership in our work and making sure that all of our schools have the ability to do that, not just our high school spaces. Looking at an enhanced relationship building and community engagement across the board. Next will be our enhanced coordination of access in MCPS high schools. We are asking that the CEOs are offered a designated workspace at each high school, understanding that they are not permanently stationed there. They will be having access to a desk, a telephone, and a computer or a laptop, as agreed. And then finally, engaging with wellness with staff. We are looking to have ongoing and consistent meetings with our CEO and our high school teams, including the counselor, social worker, and restorative justice coach. We're looking for many, when we talk about discipline that needs to happen in Montgomery County Public Schools, for us to really put into practice those restorative pieces that we have historically said are important. Not that discipline does not happen, but this shouldn't be a one-to-one conversation between the principal and the CEO. This has to include others, a trusted adult for that student, with the understanding that the disciplinary outcome rests with Montgomery County Public Schools. Next slide. And so two new key components that we are proposing. Again, at the top of the screen, you will see there are non-negotiable. In a moment, you'll get the opportunity to see the data that has been collected on the part of MCPD, and that data is illustrative of some things that we've talked about historically in Montgomery County Public Schools. And so what we do not want is to ever go back to the place where that data is disproportionate and it impacts, it impacts any particular student group, in particular students of color in a disproportionate way. And then certainly, we're committed to the ongoing data-driven refinement and enhancement of our work together as we move forward. So there are two things that we want to offer here. A disciplined response team that consists of the administrator, counselor, restorative justice coach, of which there is one at every single secondary school currently. A social worker, and you heard our work currently to continue that. I really appreciate the partnership with OHRD in ensuring that we can get to the place where we have enough for one at every high school. And then that trusted adult. They also will engage in a holistic review of the student's serious incidents. We have worked on a brand-new database that we hope to unveil very shortly to the board. We hope we'll have the opportunity to come back with that, that will allow for schools to be able to look at their data with the click of a button to see what's happening at their school in real time. And we feel like the analysis of that data will help us as we look to the code of conduct and how we're utilizing that. The second component we would like to add is a community collaboration engagement panel. We were well-served in our work in having the discourse. That's something I would like to say. Having the discourse, creating RSW, the creation of SWAG, allowed us to be closer to our community partners than we've ever been in the past, and their input, their insight has led to a great deal of enhancement, and we would like to include that, to meet monthly, to be able to review the data, and to continue to refine the work as we go. And having that opportunity for us, MCPS and MCPD, to meet collaboratively, to hear that feedback about this process as we continue. And these are brand-new. They do not currently exist, but we are proposing this as a part of this new structure. Next slide. And we thought it would be important to just take a look at exactly what we're proposing. So what you see on the screen before you is the SRO model that was in existence in our district, the current CEO model that came into existence in 2021 and is currently what we have in place, and then our proposed model. And then the arrows hopefully help you to align some of the key pieces. But what I do want to call out about our proposal is it does a few things that we've heard voice data about. It allows for the engagement and the relationship building between the CEO and the entire school cluster. It allows for direct line of communication between Montgomery County Public Schools and the schools and the CEO. It does not allow for the CEO to engage in handling of disciplinary school incidents. And it does allow for joint professional learning, of which we've agreed to and outlined earlier in our plan and proposal. Next slide. And so this is some data that illustrates physical arrest reports and disposition, as well as the response time of Montgomery County Police Department. And I will speak to it, and then I will ask Chief Ochiolo to walk us through. But certainly, I do want to say from the school's perspective, having this, this was a key part of the conversation around where we went from the SRO to our current state. Where was the data? How often did we have access to it? How did we cut the data in a way that we could really see and it told a story? And you will see here, it tells the story of the physical arrests, as well as for the incidents that they were for. And certainly, our principals and others have been very interested in the response time, and you've heard a good deal of that. So with that, Chief Ochiolo.
Thanks, Ms. Rubin, and thanks, President Wolf, VP Silvestri. And I just want to congratulate again Dr. McKnight for your historic appointment today, which is arguably historic for the country. Congratulations. I just want to walk you through the data here on the slides, working through the different data sets and variables that we have. So this data represents August through December 31st, 2021, the first semester of school. Schools within Montgomery County called the Emergency Communications Center 1,688 times. That means that there were 1,688 incidents where a principal or a school staff member requested police service. Out of those 1,688 incidents, 563 required a police officer or a community engagement officer to take a report. We break that down by the type of incident. Fifty-seven or 10% of those were for weapons. The next category, or one of the top categories, were for a controlled dangerous substance. There were 76. We also include assaults, sexual assaults, school threats, and conflict or disruptive behavior. This does not equate to arrest data. If you look, you will see that we had 11 arrests. That was physical arrest where officers detained an individual and took them into custody. That included five weapons offenses, one armed robbery, two aggravated assaults, a school threat, an ex parte violation, and one auto theft. I want to reiterate with this data that it does not always include students that were arrested in this situation. It was anybody on MCPS property. And we do have one incident where a 44-year-old parent threatened a school principal, and he was arrested on sight. We also look at the dispositional data. There were 39 cases that were papered. A paper terminology means a paper arrest. We don't take a student or an individual into custody. The charges are written and then referred to either the Division of Juvenile Services or to the State's Attorney's Office, depending on the age of the person. And then lastly, I do want to break it down, our emergency call for service time. So the first one is where you see the emergency call, which was 15.75 minutes. We classify an emergency call as if someone dials 911. However, that doesn't mean when a dispatcher and a call taker goes through the questions, and you'll see about 2 minutes and 47 seconds, and then 2:39 with call taker processing. There is a national protocol that we go through and triage of how to handle each call to the 911 center, whether that's a medical emergency, a police emergency, or a fire emergency. When those questions are answered, then you go through a flow chart and dictates how we dispatch our officers. Once that call is dispatched, our average officer response was 9 minutes and 26 seconds. That is within, with a little bit of variability, the standard response in Montgomery County for an officer for an emergency call. We can break that down. I have that with me if you have further questions. The second chart, which is the average response time for non-emergencies, those are what we call routine calls that do not require a lights and sirens response, and that is 45 minutes. That is standard based on the volume of calls that we receive in Montgomery County. I want to reiterate two things, though. One, with the emergency calls, when 911 is called, an officer may arrive where there may be secondary information, and a supervisor, whether at the Emergency Communications Center or in the field, may then change that call from emergency to routine. So instead of officers responding lights and sirens, they may get word that there is no longer an emergency, and it is our protocol then to turn off lights and sirens and follow all traffic laws. So that incorporates that 15.75 minutes, does include when lights and sirens are activated but then turned off. And then for the 45 minutes, that is completely when they are responding and following regular traffic laws. Those calls are also sometimes held, depending on the number of CEOs and officers working. So if a CEO is at a school, say, a non-emergency call comes in from a high school, and a CEO is at a middle school, whether either engaging the community or dealing with a problem at that school, that call may be held until the CEO then can respond. So that timeframe, while it looks a lot, I just wanted to explain a little bit more in detail why it has that variability.
Well, thank you so much, Chief Ochiolo. And I would be remiss to say that the relationship and the partnership between our own Montgomery County Public School Safety and Security and Emergency Management Department and our cluster coordinators have been instrumental in helping us also to respond to some of what you see here. Next slide. And we just wanted to really bring this back as a reminder, why this is so significant, some of the changes that we've noted this year upon the return to school. And you can see why some of them resulted in some of that data that you saw previously. This is from our own serious incidents. Next slide. And so finally, just the stakeholder input. And we thought, and with some good advice and feedback, that it would be important to share. As we take notes, which we do at all of our meetings, we just pulled out some of what stakeholders have said and wanted to illustrate how it made its way into our plan. So at that first stakeholder sharing there, if CEOs need to know all students, not just if they're accused of something, and CEOs need to build trust with students by trusting students first, you will see we have prioritized that in our plan around the community building and the shared learning and rooting our model in those two components. The second there speaks about the high levels of anxiety and stress and students feeling on edge and the social media, which was one of our questions in the student forum. You can see our response and the plan to that is the enhanced capacity of our student well-being teams, the wellness room, the peer supports, and certainly, we're advocating for those wellness centers at all of our high schools, which we will do equally at county council. And then that final bullet there, the plan must reflect data and special consideration of discipline and the disproportionate impact across student groups. And you see, we have clearly outlined that the disciplined response team, discipline rests with MCPS, and then looking at that community collaboration engagement panel as a way of holding ourselves accountable to the community and their thoughts and reflections about this work as we go forward. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Ms. Wolf, for the discussion portion.
I know that we are covering safety and security on Thursday, and I kind of promised myself to hold questions till then, but I'm just a little bit confused by the statistics here. I really have to ask, you said you had 11 arrests, five weapons, two assaults, and I missed the other four numbers. But I thought you also said you had 57 weapons before that. So I'm just trying to figure out how it got to 11 over here when you said you had 563 police reports, 57 weapons, 76 dangerous substances. I just couldn't reconcile that.
I apologize, Ms. Wolf. Where are you looking at?
I'm on this sheet with the color. But yeah, what you said is not on this sheet, except for the 11 arrests. I just wrote down that you said that included five weapons, two assaults, and I didn't get the four thing because I got stuck on the weapons because you had said over here 57 weapons.
I apologize. Let me clarify that for you, so as my computer dies. But the written report topics, so of the 1,688 calls for service by the, when an incident occurred, 563 of them included or resulted in a police report being filed. Of those 563 reports, 57 of those reports were for weapons offenses. That does not mean that an individual or a youth was arrested. It means that we either took a report that an individual had a weapon, or we seized a weapon and reported it.
Well, I mean, I'm a little confused here. Some people get arrested for a weapon and some don't. What's your distinction there?
So I would have to look into each individual, I apologize again, I was trying to pull it up on my computer. I would have to look into each individual case of the 57 that were written, the reports were written, versus the five in which an individual was arrested for.
You know, this is near and dear to my heart, but I'm trying to be quick, you all. I really am.
And Ms. Wolf, I could just clarify, the five, those were 50% of white males and 50% black males that were arrested for the five offenses of weapons. So the race breakdown of those were, they were all male. However, the race breakdown was 50% white and 50% African-American.
I heard you say paper arrests. So a paper arrest is different from these 11 arrests, I'm assuming. But, you know, it seems to me that that's an opportunity for a problem to develop, for you to have a paper arrest. Exactly what does that look like?
So a paper arrest means there's not an immediate threat to an individual, or there's not an act of a crime occurring at the time that the officer arrives to the school. So I'll provide you an example. An officer gets a report of a fight involving a weapon at a school. When he arrives to the school, there are no visible injuries, and the fight has broken up. An officer cannot arrest an individual based on hearsay. They would have to then file a paper form, and then that paper form or paper arrest would be reviewed by the Department of Juvenile Services.
Well, that just seems like it could result in a lot of inequities, if I could use that term.
I completely...
Yeah, I did. I wanted to speak to the other piece also. I thought our data showed that in MCPS, we saw an increase in knives, which we classify as a weapon, and I believe Montgomery County Police also classify that as a weapon. The other piece about the paper arrests, the next iteration of our work is to work with Frank Duncan and the Juvenile Services Office about those paper arrests. What traditionally happens there is because the state attorney has diversion programs, but that decision rests there. And we need to build in some communication about what happens and also get the breakdown racially of the amount, the students who are on paper arrests. But not just that, what was the disposition, where they sent to, let's say it was for alcohol use or something, where they sent to Alcoholics Anonymous, what really happened? That's a deeper dive that we need to also do on our end in MCPS.
You hit the nail on the head to me by saying some refer to diversion programs, and that's their decision, not our decision. And so a paper arrest just looks like a way of avoiding, to me, some issues that actual arrests may have been able to pick up. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I do. In speaking with Mr. McCarthy, what they're looking to do in their diversion programs is to not put the student through the juvenile justice system and sort of contribute to that school-to-prison pipeline. It's the connection and the communication that's missing because we could pick it up on our end, too, and provide those wraparound supports, but we often are not aware of what the disposition is once they are assigned to that diversion program. Which program, we just don't know, and we'd like to build that in.
I would just like you to keep some data on that.
Absolutely.
Get some information at the end of the year. And I just have a couple more questions. I'm gonna let you all have it, because I know it had to raise questions in your mind. When, I like the idea of a monthly meeting to look at data. So these groups that are participating, it would seem to me, if you're going to look at data, some of the staff and students from the actual school ought to be involved, whereas they may not be involved in these committees. I think it's very important, in particular, that some of the students from the schools be involved in these monthly reviews of data, simply because the perspective you get from people looking from the outside in may be different than from the inside out. And the last question, and then I know somebody else has, so what is maintaining essential items? Is that a gun when you say the CEO is going to go into the building? And he's going to be demilitarized, but maintain essential items? I know I asked this before, I just don't remember what the response was.
I think it's a sidearm, is that what?
Yeah, so, yes, ma'am, let me clarify that question. So under our collective bargaining agreement, officers are, we have bargained what officers carry on patrol. That basically is a bulletproof vest, as well as a department-issued weapon, handcuffs, and other essential items. We have officers who are trained in tasers. If they are trained and certified, that would be considered an essential item on their person. The thought process behind here is that we heard from the students that although they really enjoyed having the CEOs in their buildings, that they thought that our uniforms were, and I don't want to mischaracterize their speech, but scary, and that their vests were scary, and that they wanted, that they felt that they could be in plain clothes or in a uniform that was not as official-looking or as combat-looking, as some of the students said. So we're looking, within the collective bargaining agreement and our rights, and working with our labor partners, to see if we can wear plainclothes uniforms but still carry a weapon and/or their bulletproof vest if necessary.
So you heard from the students that participated in the RSSW and SWAG. Were those regular students or were those leadership students?
No, those were graduate students.
But they're not across, someone from every school isn't represented on that group because it would get unmanageable, right?
Ms. Wolf, I could just jump in there. We heard that specifically from some of the 230 students that came from across all 70 schools last Wednesday. We also then had, I think, five or six students Zoom into the Friday meeting with our Montgomery County Police Department partners and engaged in really, I mean, a dialogue, a conversation, and this came up there as well. One student even went as far as to comment about the difference between seeing an officer without a vest or an officer when they put their hands on their hips versus an officer when they put their thumbs in their vest. The students are watching, right? And they're watching what the officers are wearing and how, what their affect is. So that came, and our police partners were engaging with them and answering questions and asking our students questions back and really prompting the dialogue. And if I may, Ms. Wolf, this is a conversation that we're having across the department in general. As we reimagine public safety here in Montgomery County, we are looking at what uniforms and our best approach to policing and how our officers are displayed to the public. So we love the feedback from the children and the young people, and we're also soliciting feedback more broadly so that we can have a more customer-service-friendly department.
I thank you for your work on this. It clearly shows that you thought a lot about it. My last comment would be to ensure that the principals feel they have an actual say in this process, because, as I told you before, there was a feeling that they were basically silenced in a lot of ways. So I think that's important, and I could see that you did a lot, but I'm not interested in the SROs being returned to the schools at this time. And I know you're getting a lot of pushback on that. So that's my two cents. Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Mandrowski. I see your light on.
Yep. Well, my first part was going to be in reference for our meeting on Thursday about the hiring process and just making sure that not just the principal has a say, but perhaps, you know, there can be students or a couple students on the panel, the social, the wellness team, you know, so it's a group decision as to who's the right person for the right fit for the, for each school. And then to Ms. Wolf's point about, you know, just when you present to us, talking about the, how you'll document daily activities, and so that it's not just a record of discipline, but we can also see if there's positive advancements towards the engagement, the mutual engagement changes.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to clarify one thing that I said earlier. Those 1,688 calls, why I did classify them as incidents, they are also engagements with young people. So they are not all, we came to school because there was an incident, but it was an incident that we, whether it was talking to a young person, helping out with traffic, walking a kid across the street.
Going to a sporting event or something.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, yeah, the more we can document information, the better we all are. And then I just had a quick question for you. It was, social workers of the 15 new positions, I think you talked about it earlier, how many have we hired?
So we've hired five, and we, one of the innovative things, as you heard mentioned with OHRD in terms of seeking this out, in addition to our partnership with our institutions of academia, we also have, as a first-tier response, we have instituted a supervisor, social worker position, which we now have candidates for and are interviewing for. If we are able to secure that, then that will allow us to hire a behavioral therapist, for example, or another social worker who is still seeking clinical hours, because that person has the licensure that will allow them to oversee that, and we feel like that will also open up more possibilities for us.
And is the county still helping provide resources to try and fit a social worker in each of our, at least, secondary schools?
Yes, yes, that's exactly right.
Okay. I didn't know if you were counting our hiring as the same as their hiring or separately.
So the county, and I think they've been great partners in this, we still have our tight alliance and allegiance with HHS, where their social workers and their therapists, through linkages to learning or a variety of other programs, are still servicing our schools and our students.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Yeah. Thank you. I just want to start out first, Ms. Rubin, by thanking you so much for starting out by calling out the power of allyship. I think we have seen how incredibly powerful and influencing our students are, and they're not all, they don't all feel empowered to speak for themselves. And so it's the allies that sometimes are the ones that elevate the voices that we need to hear most. So thank you for doing that. And Mr. Monteleone, you're using two of my very favorite phrases, taking it to scale and implementing with fidelity, because I feel like what we're hearing now in these elements that you're describing are things that we've talked about for a long time and have realized there's such an evidence base behind it, and I think we're finally, and maybe some of my colleagues will disagree with me, so I'm just speaking for myself now. You know, we talk about learning recovery and mitigating learning loss and acceleration, and none of that can happen unless we start with well-being, because there are just too many reasons right now, people walking into our spaces, staff and students alike, that they just cannot bring their best selves. And the more we are acknowledging that just as a reality and just creating those truly safe spaces, when I say safe, I mean a place where people feel seen and they feel like there are people there that are going to support them when they struggle. And I, so I see so many threads of the work that we just absolutely have to focus on because I think we're all, you know, it's a body blow every day when we see, you know, so many of our students are so amazingly strong and resilient, but then every day we see another one that's crumbled, which I think brings so much urgency to this work. And so I hope one thing we'll be talking about on Thursday is a little more of a timeline for this implementation, bringing these things to scale, and looking at implementing best practices with fidelity. You know, good news, we heard, I think, yesterday at the, with the county council, looking at, we're kind of focusing on our support for newcomers, but one of the things that came out so very, very clearly was clarion support for a wellness center in every high school, which is essential to supporting all of our families and all of our students well. And so I think we're just in a moment, and one of the other things that I'm hoping we'll hear a little bit more about on Thursday is the value that county partners like the Positive Youth Development Network and the Street Action Network are bringing to this work, and especially in the aftermath in Magruder, they have truly shown how valuable they are and how much, how richly they can understand what's happening in our communities and help us understand that better. And then the one thing I did want to call out, too, is when we look at our public comment today, Ms. Kelly's testimony, I think you referenced it earlier, Ms. Rubin, the parent of the seventh grader who had struggled so mightily and then was doing so much better with the support of staff and trusted adults in their school, but she had to conclude by saying, "He's terrified of police." And that we have to make sure that we are also acknowledging that reality for so many, especially of our young Black and Brown men, when we're talking about bringing law enforcement in, because, and I'm so glad that you've had so many students participating and really in dialogue, instead of, you know, I think a lot of our students sometimes have had not great experiences when we call them in to be part of a work group or a task force, or, and they feel like they're talked at and they're not engaged. And so the dialogue that you talk about is so important, and I'm so heartened to hear that, and also that it's going to be a through line through this work. So, yep, that's, I'm just, I'm looking forward to hearing more on Thursday. And there's one more thing, oh, the one other thing that I, is resonating with me, we heard about at our January 13th board meeting, where it was a young woman, Ms. Boitman, from Einstein, talking about the ongoing tensions between Einstein and Sherwood, and how that this was an opportunity for us to kind of formatively evaluate the processes that we employed initially in the fall, when those tensions emerged and all that stress came out sideways, and to look and see, well, you know, what are we learning from that? And how are we going to adapt and change that response going forward in partnership with our students, who are the ones experiencing that on the front lines? And so I'm assuming that that will also be part of the well-being conversation on Thursday as we're talking more about, you know, as we're learning, as we're going, and part of that is we change as we go. Anyway, thank you very much for all of this work.
Ms. Looney.
Yeah, so I'm still, I guess, kind of stuck on the gun issue that Ms. Wolf raised earlier. I know this has been part of the SRO discussion for a while. There's a lot of national evidence that points to, you know, bringing an SRO or CEO for renaming, continuing with our renaming into a situation, it tends to escalate things, and part of that does have to do with the training that they receive, which it sounds like we're working on, but I think a really big part of it is also the fact that they carry a weapon. And we talked about how students are so perceptive, right? We see a uniform, and that really changes our perception of who we're interacting with, but a weapon does, too. And so there's no answer to that. It's just a comment that I wanted to make. A question that I did have, though, is in our CEO 2.0 model, it says, "The new CEO has a direct line of communication with the school but does not respond to school incidents," and those two things kind of seem contradictory to me. Could you explain where the line is and what that means?
Sure, I'm happy to. So in the current existing CEO model, and I do, and Chief Facciolo can speak to this also, the school has to still call the non-emergency and/or 911 to have the, if there's an incident at the school where they need their CEO to be deployed there. One of the reasons for that was because of the data, right? So this was a great way, you heard Chief Facciolo speak about the number of calls, and they have it. So that's the way, that's one of the mechanisms that they're using to be able to track how often the schools are calling them. So one of the things we have to work with now is we wouldn't want the CEO to be there and then for the school to still have to go ahead and call in the number just so the call is logged and we have the data. So we do need to fine-tune how that's going to work and how that's going to look. The other part, though, to your question about what seems to be oxymoronic about it, the school incidents, there was a little gray area where, I'll give you an example. There's a fight at this school. The school calls the then-SRO to come in. The school calls the then SRO to come in. The SRO helps to break up that fight. The SRO is hit during the course of breaking that fight up. Now we have a different circumstance because the student has now hit the SRO as a result of the SRO being a part of that. That's one. It could be substance use. And the principal says, well, this happened. How do we want to handle it? Yes, we want to go ahead and make an arrest. Now, all of those things outlined in our code of conduct allows for school administration and school security to respond to those issues and utilize the code of conduct to be able to do so without the CEO present or SRO responding to that incident. And so part of our training is going to have to be, what are those significant issues? Someone using a weapon, someone who has discharged a weapon, someone who is in possession of a weapon. What are the issues that the CEOs are dealing with that falls within their domain outside of the relationship building that we're looking to engage in? And then what are the disciplinary issues that happen in our school building that our school administrators and our school security teams are trained to respond to and utilize the code of conduct for, without having the SRO come in and do that?
Yeah, and I think part of that, that I think was missing from our discussion today was the role of school security. I understand when something crosses the threshold of a level of a crime like sexual assault or, you know, robbery or whatever, that necessitates possibly police. But I don't really feel like we talked about the role of, you know, we have, we have seen an incident and a raise in, in incidents like fights. But that doesn't necessarily mean that bringing CEOs closer to schools is the answer. Maybe security could have filled some of those gaps.
So I, I want to be clear that we're not, we're, we're looking to ensure safety and security, but well-being, that's really what we led with. And we feel as it's a great opportunity to really build the relational piece. One more trusted adult in a building, one more trusted adult that a student can go to and feel like, hey, that's someone I can talk to. I do want to also use the opportunity to highlight, I think, part of what we missed in the earlier conversation, excuse me, around SROs, where there were a lot of relationship building pieces that were done. There were, there were students who confided, who went and said, hey, I kind of heard this might happen or hey, this happened over the weekend in my community. And we never really had the data about all of the things that were averted. I think that speaks to what I heard before, which is how do we get some of that data that says, what are the engagement things that are happening that are proactive in nature? And we are collecting it now, which is a great thing. So I think that's one. As far as school security, no, we haven't talked about that. And Mr. DeAndrea can certainly raise the issue on that. I think there are valued members of the school community. It was a school, it was a school security officer that helped us at the McGruder incident. Valued members that we want to continue, they're a part of this team at the school. They're a part of this disciplinary response team. And we continue that. I don't think that that changes at all. Certainly we have some staffing things that we'd like to address there to make sure that all of our schools are staffed up appropriately. But we don't see it as an either or, we kind of see it as an and.
And if I can chime in, if you don't mind? So today's presentation was to provide an overview and then Thursday, there will be additional discussion at the board meeting Thursday evening. And then we'll be following up with an additional presentation on February 24th. And so there will be discussion that incorporates more about security there. In addition, at the budget work session next week, there'll be more discussion around MCPS security as well.
I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to hearing about how that factors in. And then just taking some time to really recognize, I really think the student engagement event that was held last week was phenomenal. I don't think we've ever had student engagement done like that where we don't go through the traditional channels that bring the same people and the same faces from the same schools that we always talk about, right? And we subvert that on purpose so that we can get new faces and voices and perspectives that usually aren't represented in these kinds of discussions. So I really, I wanted to take time to highlight that. And I think as a future step, making sure that we, we think about ways to capture all of that feedback better, present it so that all 280 student voices that were there are accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Sure. I appreciate the comments of President Wolf and Ms. Harris, all my colleagues. And we did have some parents come and give testimony today. I didn't know who you were referring to, but I know that Sakias and Kar Japar made some great comments as well. So I know that we're going to have this discussion on Thursday, so I'm at table what I'm going to say. But I wanted to go back to the mental health, psychological and social emotional services, that piece. We talked about how we're going to be providing additional support to our schools around mental health. But I wanted to, help me understand, because we are requiring staff to do, to do some more, to do more work, right? Talk about the role of the directors in some of this work. I think for me, the concern is we have nine directors with about 24 schools each. And as we're trying to do more, how are they able to get to the schools to provide this support? And I know we have another budget work session coming up. Does this look like we need more directors? Like, how do we do this work right and not stretch people even further? But how do we do it with less, I mean, it's a lot. So how do we do this work and not have the people in place? Because what I'm hearing, it sounded like we need more people.
Yes, thank you, poor member Evans. So on, what is it, Thursday? Monday of next week, we have our budget work session. One of the pieces that we will cover, bringing some amendments to, to the Board of Education. You know, we've done significant work around looking at social emotional well-being and support. And, you know, some of these really extensive conversations we've had as of recently, were not a part of, it was a part of the work that we'd planned earlier, but it wasn't as intense as what we've recognized we need over the past couple of weeks, particularly when we've had a chance to really dive in and understand more deeply what some of the issues are that are impacting us in the way that we've seen. So we will be bringing some amendments forward that reflect some of the additional investments we believe are needed to actually implement this plan with fidelity. And so I appreciate you asking that question because it will be, you will see much of the narrative of what we're describing in the conversation today being very relevant in those amendments that we bring forward.
Very good. Right. I hear people talk about this is, you know, we can't continue to act as if this is pre-pandemic and that we're back to normal and we're not. And so that's part of it. So I look forward to that discussion. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Silvestri?
In the interest of time, I just want to put out there what I'm interested in you all coming back to us with. And yes, a vote to, yes, to wellness centers in every high school. I second and third that. About the MOU and the amendment, it's all about accountability and the details, right? So we had a great MOU previously that was not adhered to. And so I want to see how, it was not adhered to, to the letter of the MOU. There were a lot of good things that were put in there as measures of accountability and they were not implemented. And so that's what I want to see. So what is going to be different this time? We're promising great things, but what's going to be different so that we are sure that we are meeting the letter of the law for this MOU? I also have heard this whole concept of officers getting involved in school discipline. And I've heard principals say, well, I intervened when that happened. That takes coaching and professional development. Some principals may not feel equipped to do that. And I think that's critical to separating the roles. What's discipline and what does the school administration handle? And what is an SRO warranted thing? So I really want to hear about how our principals are going to be trained and equipped and empowered to say, no, this is, this is my jurisdiction. Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Rubens, we touched a little bit about this. But in your very comprehensive model of wellness, I also want to hear what we're doing to help the kids that are getting in trouble. You know, some of the cases that we've heard about, there was no disciplinary history, so we couldn't have intervened. But there's plenty of cases where there is disciplinary history. And I heard diversion program, but that's not ours. What are we doing to the kids that are getting repeatedly in trouble so that we help them? Because that's what they need is to cry for help. So I just, I would like to hear more about that when you come back to us at a later time. Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri, do you want me to address the issues that I can in this moment since I won't be back on Thursday? Okay. So the MOU, just, just to broaden the conversation. The CEO program or the, the previous iteration, the SRO program was under our patrol services division. So they were attached to the, to the thousands of officers that routine patrol. With the reimagining public safety work, with the reimagining SSSW work, the CEOs have come into a new division within the department that reports directly to me. And so there, we have built-in accountability measures into the new MOU. But one of the reasons that the assistant chief role is in place is so that there can be better relationships between the school, the public school system as, as the MCPD. And to have collaborative conversations about what's working, what's not, and to, to maintain a dialogue about the MOU and ensuring accountability. And as far as discipline, we are actively training our CEOs not to partake in the disciplinary process. I think one of the, one of the things that I can't speak to because I was not here, but what I've heard in the feedback of both the students and our officers is that they were pulled into conversations around school discipline because they were in buildings and they, they may have responded to a fight. And then there was a conversation that had, that had to happen immediately after that incident. We are now, while the CEOs will be in schools and they'll have a designated workspace, we are, we are taking measures to ensure that they are not part of the conversations regarding discipline if it is decided by the school system that they are not going to pursue a criminal justice or juvenile justice round. And then our CEOs would, would no longer be, be present for that. Sure.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know if I could get you to send me a report on those 1,688 incidents? I don't know if you're yet able to overlay the schools involved and whether it was arrests or paper arrests and the demographic breakdown and what the, if I could use the word, charge was. Thank you. Really appreciate this. This represents a lot of work this month. I know with everything we have going on, this is really a great effort. And I'll be interested in, in following through and seeing what the data is showing.
Can I, can I just quickly ask, could, I don't know how readily available that data is, but if we, if you have it and we could have it before, by, before Thursday or whatever for our meeting, then I think that would be really helpful. But if it's, I mean, that's a short notice, so I didn't know if it's just something that just needs to be hit print or if it's something you have to put together?
I also didn't know if it would be identifiable in any way. So I wanted you to, you know, put it together so that it was not identifiable. So if you need longer than Thursday, that's fine. I just wanted to.
I will endeavor to have it to you by Thursday, but know that, please know that our data systems are manual. So it requires analysts to literally count all 1,688 calls for service. So we'll do our best, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. I think that, we really appreciate that. I think it brings us up to item number 13, which is consent items. Is there any item anybody wishes to pull? Ms. Silvestri?
Yes, I need to pull 13.1. I think it's the contracts under $25,000 because there's a contract for Montgomery College there that I have to recuse myself for.
Okay. Well, do you, are you recusing yourself from all of 13.1 or just that one?
What is, I don't know what the procedure is.
Okay, okay. Ms. Harris?
Yes. I just want to pull item 13.8, the monthly financial report for a quick.
13.8?
Yes, 13.8.
Are there any others? Can I get a motion to move 13.2 through seven? And? And 13.9 in block?
Dr. Dottson said so moved.
Oh, second, sorry.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Okay, so we'll start with 13.1. Ms. Silvestri?
I move, I'll move item 13.1.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, it's just.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
That's the one that you, that's the one you're not pulling. Okay, so that's everyone except for Ms. Silvestri. Thank you. And what about 13.8? Ms. Harris?
Yes. On the monthly financial report, I think Mr. Riley is in the ether waiting to do just a quick walkthrough on, we're looking at the end of year fund balance, which is projecting only a balance of about $51,000 at the start of the, of FY '23, which is significantly less than what we're used to. So he was going to just give us a quick overview.
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
So the monthly financial report, that's basically the outcome of our monthly financial monitoring process. And that's where we're looking at our budget compared to the actuals for this fiscal year, FY '22. But as a point of explanation, there's a little chart there on page two of this report. And that walks us through our FY '21 end of year balance, our audited balance. And then we look into the projected revenues and expenses for '22. And the ultimate, the bottom is what we're projecting for fund balance for FY '23. Now, what we do already have a placeholder there for is the $25 million that we've committed to the FY '23 budget, which, which you guys know. But Ms. Harris, you're correct, that $51,287, that is, that is a low number. And we're going to do, be extra careful to make sure that departments and divisions stay within their budgets to make sure that doesn't, we don't want that to go below zero. Ultimately, what that represents is our unassigned fund balance with the $25 million being part of our assigned balance. So per MSD, we can't have an unassigned fund balance that's negative at the end of the year. So that's something we are going to be monitoring extra close throughout the, the rest of the months of this year.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to move 13.8?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Okay, item number 14 is for information only. Can I get a motion to move item 15.1 and 15.2?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous. Does anybody have any new business? No? All right. Well, item number 16 is for information only. And I think we have reached the end of our meeting. So.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.